Five o'clock. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to our meeting tonight. We'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are in the Maggi, the traditional and unseated territory of the Maggi people. And we'd like to welcome a few delegations today. Our agenda is from us. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda that we have?
Could I have an H5 roadside signage?
Anything else? There are nothing. The last per consensus on the inch. We have a consensus. We have it in general. Great. We have a few delegations this evening. Up first, Mr. Chris Larson from the Warfront Rally. I'll move the floor to you, sir.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor. As Deputy Mayor just mentioned, my name is Chris Larson. I'm the president of Sports and Entertainment Atlantic, otherwise known as C. And we've become directly involved with the Warfront Rally as the event production agency for this year's rally. I'll introduce two people that probably don't need any introduction to this group that are with me today. Rick Allright here, who for the last two years has done this role. We have now brought Rick into our organization to help us with the rally. And at the back of the room is the chair of the board of the rally, Ricky Stewart. I feel like this is a little bit like Dragon's Den. We're here to pitch a deal. So Dragons, if you're ready, I'd like to suggest to you off the top, we're here to pitch a $15,000 investment by the town of Digby in this year's Warfront Rally. The rally, as you all know, has a longstanding history in this community, a longstanding history of support from the town, both financially and in services. The services that you provide are significantly important to the logistics and the operation of the rally. And probably nobody knows that more so from our team than Rick and Ricky. The depth to which you provide support services is not insignificant. It's truly, truly appreciated. This is a year when we're asking all our funding partners to level up their investment. This is a year where we need to find, where we need more financial horsepower to address some of the things that I think gives the rally a safe road forward as it enters its third decade. We call it, we call it introducing a new, we're in the painting business. We're putting a new coat of paint on the rally. The rally's like a 20-year-old house. Doesn't need to be knocked down, but it definitely needs a fresh coat of paint. And you'll see through our presentation tonight, the things that we're doing to try and refresh the programming and the attractions that probably have become repetitive over the last few years. And if there's a sentiment I've heard from all the people that I've talked to and around the community and elsewhere, it's the same old, same old. I've been, I don't need to go back. It's always the same. I don't know if there's a lot of accuracy in that, but that would certainly be the opinion. So what we'll take you through is a brief overview of our business plan, so to speak, to support what we're doing this year. And I'd like to start with a very brief video that Rick will run for us here. It's our new hype video that we showcased at the Halifax Motorcycle Show late February. Those of you that are familiar with the rally, and you probably all are, we hope that that video captures the spirit and the essence and the vibe of the rally. We use it very effectively in a wide range of communications that we're currently involved with, whether they're funding partners, sponsors, vendors, et cetera. So to get into the context of the presentation for you here tonight, I'd like to introduce a little more formally our team, if we could. There's as many as nine of us associated with Sports and Entertainment Atlantic today. You've met Rick. I would suspect, I would suggest to you that rally week will have five or six people on the ground here to help the organizers do everything that needs to be done. In terms of putting a fresh coat of paint on the rally, today we announced that Matt Minglewood will be the headliner entertainer on Saturday night in the Marina area, which we're likely to end up calling Biker Square or Builder Square. And Matt will go onstage at nine o'clock Saturday night. So Matt Minglewood's been here before to this community, and he's relatively new to the, I would say he's new to the rally. He's something that I think the community will enjoy, and I think his brand of rock and roll and blues will appeal to the rider community. So we're delighted to lead with the announcement of Matt Minglewood today. Other fresh coat of paint ideas that we're adding to the programming and the attractions, excuse me, from Barrington, Nova Scotia, the company is known as Wild Axe Productions. A young man by the name of Darren Hudson runs and operates that company. He is a seven-time international axe throwing champion, Barrington, Nova Scotia. And he has, Wild Axe Productions has a mobile unit where they come into an event and they stage demonstrations on axe throwing. They also invite people to join in that fun. I'm sure the riders will enjoy the opportunity to throw an axe, as will perhaps the community. It's all done in a very safe environment. They have instructors. They have all the necessary safeguards to make sure it's a fun and indeed a family orientation. More paint as we go to the next page. The visual probably needs a little bit of explanation. That's a mechanical bowl that's done up as a mechanical can. It has all the same gyrations as a mechanical bowl in terms of twisting, turning, and bucking, but it's done using a rendering of a Coldstream ready-to-drink product. We're announcing today as well that Coldstream are our official ready-to-drink partner for Warfront Rally. And they're based in Stuyac. More paint tomorrow afternoon. We expect to be able to confirm a demonstration of hydroplane boats. We're working with the organization that's based in Valleyfield, Quebec, called the Hydroplane Racing League. They're providing three boats that will come to Digby and showcase what hydroplane racing's all about. We suspect that's going to be very appealing to the riders and also to the communities. Hydroplanes are very fast and they're very loud. Sort of sounds like a motorcycle, something the motorcycle community would enjoy. So that's, I have a final meeting with them tomorrow afternoon. I expect we're going to be in a position to confirm that at that point in time. Other things that are pending, we hope to work with one of the scallop trawler boat owners here in the community to offer, this is a very unique experience targeted to the visitors that will come from out of town. It's an opportunity to get on a scallop trawler, not trawling, but out in the basin. You're onboard and there'll be scallops there, either in preparation or already prepared. There'll be somebody shucking. It'll offer those people an opportunity to try their luck shucking, and there might be a wine or beverage alcohol product as a parent. That's a ticketed event, and it will be targeted to the guests from out of town. So if you're an out-of-town rider that's coming to Digby for the Warfront Rally, you have an opportunity to get on. One of the world's largest scallop fleets is right over there in your harbor, if not the largest, and experience the authenticity of that. We think that'll be very popular. Quite frankly, the next one is still pending, but we're in discussions with Trailer Park Boys to come to join the fun at Warfront Rally on Friday. So for successful landing, Trailer Park Boys, we would have Trailer Park Boys Friday night as our headliner, and Matt Minglewood Saturday night as our headliner. I think their appeal is evident to us in Nova Scotia. We probably know them best, although they have certainly developed a North American and an international level of fame. We hope to be able to confirm them within the next seven to 10 days. So just at that point, you'll see that the approach that we're taking is to bring some new attractions and some new performers into the programming for Warfront Rally to remove that image that it's always the same. Nothing changes. All the while, being very cautious not to throw baby in bathwater out together. This is a motorcycle rally, so we need to continue to have a lot of focus on things that riders are looking for. And we talk about, we talk about Builder Square, call it the, you and I would know it, as Digby Centre. All of those that are in that business will be clustered there. So all the bike-related companies that are coming, I'm happy today to confirm that Harley-Davidson is coming back with privateers, their dealer in Halifax. And there'll be a wide range of other biker services in there. That's also where, by the way, the mechanical bowl will be, the mechanical can. It'll be inside that space where the asphalt is in the Digby Centre. So a lot of paint. One of the things that hasn't changed, and we want to continue to build out over 10 years, the Share the Win program. Started with Mahad's Beginnings. Those of you that know Peter James, he runs the Acadian Sea Plants facility. He is the driving force behind Share the Win. He continues to be that person, and he has a target of being able to ride, provide an opportunity for those that otherwise would not have the opportunity to enjoy a motorcycle ride. Tideview, Tideview's residents will have that opportunity and other groups. He has a target of doing as many as 500 this year, and there's been as many as 3,600 people enjoy that experience since he started it 10 years ago. We see this being the community legacy. Legacy doesn't have to be bricks and mortar. Legacy can be programs, and we think the Share the Win program reflects very well on this community and reflects very well on the rally. Other things that are important objectives for us, we're in the discussions with the province right now to increase their funding support. As I mentioned at the outset, we're asking all our funding partners to level up their level of investment. We're re-engaging motorcycle manufacturers and dealers. There's some evidence of that already with Harley-Davidson. We're in the process of fully revamping the Rally Pass program. There will be no registration fee for a motorcycle rider to enjoy Warfront Rally. That's a major change. And the value of the Rally Pass will accordingly be elevated to, they're going to want to buy that for the value that's in the package. Our marketing with an out-of-province focus has begun with the help of the Digby Area Tourism Association, ADA. We're into a collaborative co-op program with them, excuse me, in Toronto in southern Ontario, where the Globe and Mail's Eastern Travel Guide, which has been in place for decades, will feature a full-page ad with the rally and the 10 wonders of Digby featured. Correspondingly, there's 500,000 of those publications. Correspondingly, late May, in a collaborative billboard, there'll be a rally and a Digby Tourism billboard at the Toronto Airport, so significantly raising the presence of the rally outside the province. We're working with ADA now to identify other collaborative co-op funding programs where we both spend $0.50. We get to tag into programs they have that are reaching outside the community, reaching outside the province, to bring people to Nova Scotia and bring people to Digby. With our friends at the Pines, we're working with them to expand their level of engagement. The vendors, excuse me, there's 75 or more vendors in vendor alley along Water Street. We want to make sure that that has rider-friendly content, amongst other things, but it needs, our vendors need to, the largest portion of our vendor community needs to be focused on rider value. Builder Square, the Marina, increased partnership, which we already talked about. Inside Builder Square and such, or at the Marina, will be our beer garden and patio, and our objective is to increase that revenue source by 25%. The Main Street Strip, call it from the Maude Lewis House, which you might call the Maude Lewis House by Fairview Insurance, to when you get down to the Marina, we will be branding that as the Rally Strip for Warfront Rally purposes, and that will become that, and the Marina will become the epicenter of the rally. And we're also in the process, Rick and I and members of our team are in the process of developing a volunteer strategy that gives us an opportunity to invite a wider, broader range of demographic to become volunteers of the Warfront Rally. We believe those people are here in the community, and we need to be reaching out to them, and we intend to do so. And we call a lot of this riding into new beginnings. Rally's going into its third decade. It's got 20 years of success. It's time to build a pathway for its third decade. We think the biggest way to ensure that that pathway starts on the right foot is by introducing some change. So that's where we are with the rally right now. We still have a lot of work to do in terms of finalizing scheduled events, finalizing programming, finalizing our sponsorships, finalizing our vendors, working our way through volunteer strategy. There's still a lot of work to do, but here on August 22nd, I guess it is, with probably 18 weeks to go, we're feeling good about where we are. And we also know we've got a lot of work. We need the help of the town of Digby. It can't be any more plain than your services that you provide are critically important, and we ask you to consider the opportunity to increase your funding. I'm happy to take any questions if there should be any.
Mr. Larson, that's great news. Everything else is really cool. I was just leaving this a little while back because it was getting dry and I was sitting by myself. Same old, same old about here as well.
Right.
I do love some of the new attractions. I could actually help you out in one of them if you would like that.
Yes.
I know a guy that knows Darren Hudson so good, it's not even funny.
Yeah.
He's also Digby local.
He works for Darren, I think.
Well, he's at, you know what's going on, Ryan McIntyre.
Yeah.
He's my best friend.
Oh, go on.
So he would love to come. He just, he has an awesome podcast right now, too.
I think Darren has already recruited him to be here.
Great. Okay. I was making sure.
You know him with the podcast.
Yeah, it's going on. I'll send you some stuff on.
Great to have that opportunity.
Check it out.
Yeah.
Be a great addition to that.
Thank you.
Yes, hopefully everything else that's pending is, man, it looks awesome. I mean, I hung out with the Trailer Park Boys before, too. It was super fun. But yeah, I just wanted to shout out on that, and I think this looks pretty good.
Thank you for that, Counselor, yeah. Trailer Park Boys obviously bringing their own personalities and their own brand of humor. If we're successful engaging them, I do see they would have some sort of a performance on the main stage, but we also see them being integrated for autograph sessions and meeting the public.
Six degrees of separation. We're Clattenbury, and I live at the same Rottweiler School.
There you go.
I'd just like to commend you and your community for all the work that you put in being involved in some of these festivals. I know it takes months and months to get a cup of the iceberg of the festival.
Yeah, those comments are truly appreciated because to know events, to know that it's really the tip of the iceberg is what you see publicly. And I'd like to use this opportunity as well to do another shout-out to Ricky Stewart. There's nobody around that table that cares more about the rally than Ricky Stewart. Dedicated, he's great passion for it. He dedicates a lot of his personal and professional time to it. So the rally is very fortunate to have somebody like Ricky Stewart as a rock in the organization. Probably embarrassed the hell out of you, bud. Deserves to be said.
Speech! As y'all know, I usually hide in this background at everything. I don't want to be in the public. I just go behind the volunteer, a lot of public person.
What did you have in mind?
Volunteer renewal. You sort of touched on it.
Yeah, we haven't crafted the strategy fully yet, but some ideas have come to mind. We needed to use social media. We think we're going to change the demographic of those that want to help their community, be engaged in something they can be proud about in their community. We need to find that younger demographic. And where are they today? They're on social media. So we'll be reaching out to them there. We'll be using the services of DARC. We'll long reach into the community and the sporting groups and other organizations to share that volunteer recruitment message. I think today we probably have around 75 volunteers. We need more. The volunteer community has experienced fatigue. Volunteer fatigue's a very real thing. Our board has experienced board fatigue. But on the front line, we need to grow their numbers, and we need to make sure those 75 people that who are engaged and want to be engaged feel they're still very welcome. We need to grow it. I don't know what the right number is, but if we were to add 30 more people to our volunteer group, 40 more people to our volunteer group, and that's not an astronomical number, and you start reaching out, then I think we would have some renewal there that brings new energy, new excitement to the very much needed volunteer role.
CEO? Any else from the council?
Well, thank you, and just so you don't get up too late, here's a little evening reading.
Wonderful.
Which you just, I didn't have them up beforehand because I don't get all beat ahead. The next one, right?
Thank you.
Let's get to our company. Thank you already.
Thanks to all of you. Appreciate the time and the opportunity to share our vision for where we're going with the rally. Look forward to working with the town again, very much so. So thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. Next on our agenda, our national wallet, moving in.
Just because of the format it came in? If I could, yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to, I can just, you can be the actor. Okay. Yeah, okay. That's fine. Mayor Bartlett, deputy mayor, council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I started this position at the end of November 2022, and the first order of business was to apply for the Office of Healthcare Professionals Recruitment Community Fund, which we successfully acquired that year and again in '24. We recently applied for this fund a third time and are awaiting approval. Some projects that have been accomplished through this fund are branding established for Digby Area Healthcare Engagement, a new website, social media accounts created, a fantastic recruitment video, which is the first thing you see when you open up the website, digbyareahealth.ca, facility walkthrough videos, healthcare student care packages, healthcare retention survey, and much more. I have made many connections in various organizations, Nova Scotia Health, Doctors Nova Scotia, Dalhousie Medical School, and many local organizations as well. I have monthly meetings with MLA Jill Balser, monthly check-ins with Rebecca Cassidy, the Nova Scotia Health Physician Recruitment Consultant, monthly provincial navigator meetings. I've attended the Rural and Remote Medicine Conference in Niagara Falls, mini rural and remote medicine conference in Charlottetown, which Dr. Arseneau joined me last fall, Canadian Society of Physician Recruitment Conferences for personal professional development. Casper also hosted two events overseas this past fall, which Dr. Ashley McCormick and I attended. The first event in Dublin was for Canadian medical students who are studying medicine in Ireland. The second event was held in Manchester and was targeted for physicians possibly interested in relocating to Canada. We have made some contacts from both of these events. Nothing has fully transpired yet, but we did recently hear from one of the students who's looking to come for an elective this summer, so that's pretty exciting. I have annual one-on-one check-ins with the local physicians and nurse practitioners. Hosted the Dalhousie Family Medicine Interest Group in April of 2023, and the 12 students are actually coming again this weekend. We've hosted first-year medical students for Rural Week, as well as several medical students for their electives and clerkships. This continues to grow, which is very encouraging. I've taken a workshop on diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, and completed the Welcome Ambassador training through ISANs, made connections with local rental property owners, and created a database of housing opportunities, established connections with local students who are currently studying in the healthcare field or interested in it, annually attend the Dalhousie Family Medicine Resident Education Weekend Job Fair, which occurs in September, have done community presentations for the Practice Ready Assessment Program cohort, joined the local Immigration Partnership Council with Western Regional Enterprise Network, deliver gifts and treats and recognition of our healthcare professionals throughout the year, also host many events, bowling night, movie nights, pizza party, ice cream parties, and much more, including a healthcare-focused career fair for local high school students, which was held again this March. We plan to make it an annual event, and it is very well received by both students and healthcare exhibitors. The Community Navigator Group was added to the agenda of the College of Physicians and Surgeons of Nova Scotia's Welcome Collaborative, which supports physicians new to Nova Scotia. We're able to promote the things we do to help newcomers get settled, as well as hear any concerns or feedback the physicians may have. The foundation acquired a second apartment, which has assisted in accommodating local physicians and nurse practitioners and medical students. Overall, we have welcomed and helped settle seven doctors, two nurse practitioners, and several other healthcare professionals. Some things that are coming up, Dr. McCormick and I are attending the International Conference of Emergency Medicine in Montreal in May. We're very excited for this opportunity. Working with Kim Charles, the new Site Lead Health Services Manager at the Digby Hospital on recruiting and settling nurses. A big portion of the community fund asked this year was for a healthcare anti-racism campaign. We are hopeful it will be approved as it needs to be addressed. This past couple of years have been a time of learning and networking. I think we have already come a long way with why this position was established, but need to keep at it. I'm excited to be a part of the solution of what the future holds for healthcare in Digby and the surrounding areas. Anybody have any questions for me?
I'd just like to take the opportunity, now, as Deputy Mayor, just as a citizen, four, six short years ago, we had one doctor. To have seven now, it's a long way to come in that short amount of time, thank you. Council have any questions?
Got your point.
Yeah, I'll actually echo those comments, I think it's fantastic the work you've done and to know that we've got a clinic that's essentially fully staffed with physicians is wonderful. And I think, sorry to touch on your question and ask that you've got nurses listed in there, something that you're working on now. Will you probably sort of switch your priority to looking from, or from looking at physicians and nurse practitioners to nurses for the next little exit?
Yeah, so.
Seems from what the chatter is that there's more, uh, more.
So ED physicians, which is why we're going to attend that international conference because it's all emergency medicine. And they figure that the next biggest group of people other than Canadians that will attend will be Americans. So we're hoping maybe the timing will be, will be right. Um, and then yes, nurses as well, so we're hoping to maybe, um, visit the universities next fall and, and try to get them when they're just first starting their, their schooling and as well as continue to work with any that we know are already in school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions? You there?
Just like to echo what they're saying as well and, uh, it's been great. I didn't have a doctor and I just pick up the phone and the next thing you know, they're calling the doctor's there for you, so if anyone doesn't have a doctor, they, they need to pick up the phone and hit the service. And also you have a great board behind you, Linda Gregg helped you out quite a bit, I assume.
They sure do.
And, uh, it's a great organization.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wong. Uh, yes, I want to echo that as well, you're doing that as well. I have to say to everybody, I mean, this place has never been so good. Unfortunately today, I have to say goodbye to two of my really good friends, even though they are both doctors, practitioners, because they cannot land their job here, how can we fix that?
So, um, there's, we've definitely come a long way with the streamlining of physicians from other countries to get licensed in Nova Scotia, but unfortunately there are still a lot of different, um, factors when it comes to that. It just really depends on what their schooling looks like. And, um, Nova Scotia has looked at some countries that it seems to be more in line with, with the education here. Um, but it's just very different in different countries, so.
Okay, um, are you, now that the barriers might be breaking down, is that something that's going to help us through Canada? As well as with what's going on in the States, I've been hearing a lot of doctors that want to come this way. Are you hearing anything for that around this area?
Yeah, so US is already pretty streamlined to be able to come here. Um, we're working on a, um, project right now with some South African physicians who, um, as you know, we have Dr. Riddelingus that works in our emergency department and he had some colleagues in, in South Africa and, uh, so they wanted to come, so they're going to go through kind of a intense mentorship through ERMS and then eventually they'll be able to come to the community hospitals, uh, to help out as well. So there, there's definitely lots of different things that are going on, it's just, it takes time.
I know a big part of the loss was the communication and a language barrier. Is there something more that we could be doing as a community to contribute to that solution?
Um, I think there's a lot of, um, like with ISANs and with Digby Area Learning, I, I think there's a lot of programs, the Y Reach, the Settlement Coordinator there, um, so there's a lot of things already in place to be able to help people that need to improve their, their language skills. I think it needs to be looked at more before they even get here, instead of getting here and then being in limbo, because maybe their English isn't to a level where it, it should be.
Is there any, I know some other clinics in different parts of the world have a translator service.
Yeah, I mean, we do have one at the hospital, yeah, it's a computerized one. It, it's more for, I guess, the patients coming in, but yeah, it could be used, I guess, either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions from council? Thank you, Bernard.
Great, thank you.
And Digby Fire Department. I do. Pause now. Um, most people know who I am, Fire Chief, my name is Robert Warren, I've been here for a while doing this, so. Um, one of my, this is our training officer, Steve Savory, and my Deputy Fire Chief, Adrian Law, is here as well. We're here to, we've had an issue where we've, we've been trying to put together a training facility. We've worked, we've come to the town in the last year, ideas that we've had and what can we do? Um, we seem to have come up against a, a brick wall. Um, so we have a presentation of what the facility is and why we need it. As not down the road, it's as soon as possible, it's something that we need to do. Um, we need the training, um, people have realized, don't realize that we don't get the training that we have, that we don't get, we don't do the, some of the stuff, we, things, the attack on fire, we do. You're unsure, you're going to see insurance changes, uh, because we can open and put your house in, your house. Anyway, I'm not going to go on here because I'll just batter on, but I'm going to turn it over to Steve. He's going to do the presentation and, uh, any questions for us after, just, uh, give us a shout.
Is there a way to, you're on or?
No, I would have had to have it before, I didn't know for a presentation.
Okay. All right, thanks, Rob. Uh, Mr. Mayor, good to be here. So the last, uh, couple of months there, we were asked to come in and just clarify a few questions or comments that anybody might have with the, uh, training facility, so in front of you, I have the same PowerPoint as what I have here. So a few things we're going to go over is basically who all is with the fire department, like who makes up our fire departments in the town? Uh, go over costs, uh, personal protective equipment, why we need training? We'll talk about the fire school itself, which is in Halifax, and our training facility. So my unique position, um, my full-time job, I'm a paramedic, based out of Digby, but I'm never here. So I actually have the unfortunate ability to meet all the departments in literally the province, because we're all over the place. So I've been able to network myself and see what everybody else is doing, Southwest Nova, up to Halifax, even past Toronto, to Glasgow, what everybody's actually doing within the fire services. So the fire department here in Digby, we have, uh, thirty-six people, thirty-six members, sorry, on, uh, on strength. We range teachers, school administration, visible employees, tradespeople, everybody from all walks of life. Our fundraising, as everybody knows, we go through our giant bingos and the firefighter fifty-fifty. And we average between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty emergency calls per year. So we go between motor vehicle accidents, structural fires, alarm soundings, grass, forest fires, fuel spills and smells, as well as we also have mutual agreements with our surrounding departments, so Bear River, Digby Neck, Smith Cove, um, Brighton Barton, all these smaller departments, we have agreements with that we help them out and they help us in, in events of emergencies. So what some people, it's not a lot of common knowledge, but a lot of money goes into being a firefighter, we're all volunteers. We're not being paid for any of this. So part of that, a lot of the funding that comes in is our equipment. So just, I have a bullet breakdown there of what the average cost is for everything. So our helmet, five hundred dollars, the jacket and pants, four thousand. Boots, around six hundred dollars, gloves, two hundred and fifty dollars. A flash hood, that's our hood that goes over our neck to protect us from where, uh, skin might be exposed, is a hundred and fifty dollars. And our self-potented breathing apparatus, the big air packs you all, everyone sees, they're about twelve thousand to thirteen thousand dollars per, per unit. Overall costs, sorry, face masks is five hundred and fifty dollars. So the overall cost for one firefighter is close to nineteen thousand dollars.
Just for your goal, our supporters, uh, local fire chiefs that we do mutually with, uh, Josh Snyder, so, um, from Brighton Barton, I love him.
So basically, why do we need real-life training? So our biggest thing, what we need for a facility is, like I said, we, we're going to unknown environments any time of day. Day or night, we have no idea what anyone's house looks like, we have no idea what we're going to, where we're going to, but we need training. Okay, that's the flat, just a bit. Confined space, so we need this area that we can train, that allows firefighters to move around inside confined space areas and they're not going to panic, they're going to know what to do in case they have to get somebody out. That's our ultimate goal, is life-saving. So another part of the building is a closed smoke, it's simulated, I call it disorientation training. I already touched on that, we don't know what anybody's houses look like, we don't know what anyone, where we're going to, what's going on. And it's totally different from having a nice clear room like this to not being able to see your hand in front of your face. Live heat training, so this will allow our firefighters to see, experience firsthand how heat, smoke, not knowing where you are, can't see what you're doing, will affect the persons. Okay, it's all fine, you know, seeing it on TV, but actually experiencing it in real life, in real time is definitely something that no one, unless you actually do it, can prepare yourselves for. As well as, uh, ventilation training, so this allows to recognize when to evacuate the smoke, when to evacuate the heat from certain buildings, because it's not just going in there and opening up a window. If you open up the wrong window, if you do something wrong at the wrong time, you're killing anybody in that building. It's the cold hard truth, if you do it, it's very serious, people will die. So that's why we need some kind of training in that intimate areas. So our ultimate goal is to save lives, seconds of property. So Nova Scotia, we do have a Nova Scotia firefighter schools located in Waverley, Nova Scotia, which is just outside of Halifax. It's the International Fire Service Accreditation Congress and Pro Board, so National Board of Fire Service Professional Qualifications. So this is where ultimately most firefighters go in the province for the firefighter training. So do, uh, basically the fire service, there's different levels of training you can do, you have level one, level two, um, specialized training, um, officer training, rescues, everything they can do at the fire school. They offer courses throughout the year, online or in person, they do it full-time. It's called a pre-employment, so if you actually want to be a professional firefighter in HRM or somewhere across Canada, you can actually go there, be a full-time firefighter, it's a full-time course. So leading up to the soapbox, everything going on, the cost per course to go to the fire school is three hundred and thirty dollars per person. Cost per student to attend a fire school, so unless you live in Halifax, you have your three hundred and thirty dollars per course. Then you have to look at our housing, so we have our hotels, so between a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred dollars per night. Generally, it's a weekend course, you leave Friday night for a eight o'clock start in the morning until Sunday evening. So you have to have two nights, that's four hundred dollars. Meal allotment, so when I walked on the provincial government website, uh, your allotment is eight dollars for breakfast, fifteen for lunch, supper is twenty dollars. So you get two breakfasts, two lunches and three suppers. Fuel with the current price is a dollar thirty-four a liter, is around sixty dollars, roughly round trip. Your manual, depends on the course, could be a hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred dollars per book. So a total for one firefighter to go for one course for one weekend in Halifax is almost eleven hundred dollars per member. And that course, sometimes course can be four hours long, it can be two weeks, two hours long, it can be two days long. It's the same flat rate of three hundred and thirty dollars. So why do you want to do local? Big one, cost efficiency. Unfortunately, we're in a time where not all fire departments can send members to the school in Halifax. It is not feasible at all, period. Fortunately, in this area, within the surrounding communities, we actually have five fire instructors. Between Bear River, Digby, Digby Neck, Smith Cove and, and, uh, Brighton Barton, as well as St. Bernard, we do have fire instructors. The fire school can bring instructors down here if we need to, if for some reason we don't have the right resources, they will come to us. So our facility that we would like to have in place will be owned and operated by the Digby Fire Department. Neighborhood departments will have access to the training facility, free of cost. It will not be a show up whenever you want, do whatever you want, whenever you want, it will be a booking process. You will have to go through a proper booking and arranging to make sure the facility is available. It's not going to be a twenty-four hour, seven days a week operation. It will take into consideration time of day. So this will allow us to have local instructors here with the proper facility for little to no cost financially. And like Robert already mentioned earlier, it's coming down the pipeline, it is coming. Insurance and liabilities of firefighters and fire departments is going up. If we have incidents where we are not properly trained, we're not going to be able to do half of the evolutions that we have, are expected to go into, which means insurance rates will go up. And negatively impact firefighters to be at risk. Health, physically, mentally, all those things. So I know some of the concerns that were brought up, uh, noise complaints. So within the town bylaws, I know it has been there, eleven PM is when the cutoff is to town. We will not be operating past nine-thirty at night. And when I say nine-thirty at night, we are packing our trucks up, we are driving out of the driveway, we're done. We will follow provincial burn restrictions, there's going to be no live burns during provincial burn restrictions. Training hours will not exceed past nine-thirty at night in accordance with the, the town laws. I was already saying, it will be booked to advance to ensure proper instructors, safety personnel and apparatuses are available. It will not be accessible to public, public will not be able to go in and do what they want. Unless we invite the public in as an open house or show, okay, we need recruiting, feel free to come watch us, but it's not going to be open up to any, the public's not going to have access to it. And interdepartmental training, so here in Digby, if I have six members that I want to put through a confined space training, I'm not going to limit it to those six people, I want to send out emails to all the departments around and say, hey, on this day here, I want to put this training on, send some people out. So it's not going to be just six people randomly throughout the night, it's going to be invite everybody. If they want to come take part, they can, it's an open, open concept. So how much will this cost to date? Town in Digby has invested zero dollars. No money has come from the town or municipality so far for this project. The Digby Fire Department alone purchased our shipping containers, we have three shipping containers that we can use to facilitate the training building. So back in two thousand and two, for twenty-twenty-three fire budget, the town in Digby allotted a hundred thousand dollars for this training facility. In that proposal, there was no direction on how to be constructed, placement or procurement. So this is something I've done on my own initiative, to do on my own. So the next proposed allotment for the training building is scheduled to be twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-twenty-eight fiscal year. So why shipping containers? Can they even be used? Yes, they can. Shipping containers are the most cost-effective. Shipping containers are the most cost effective, they're easy to renovate and remove if needed. Multiple fire departments across North America are using ship containers that are retrofitted and renovated to meet their individual needs. They're watertight, low pollution emissions, and non-combustible materials. So who else uses them? So on the slides there, you have pictures of the Nova Scotia Fire School. They have four container stacks. Metagen Fire Department has three. St. Bernard Fire Department has one container they use for burn training. You also have Fort McMurray. You have Waterville, which is just off past Berwick. So the Waterville looks like a computer generated image, it's not, it's the actual And they actually just procured live propane training as well. I'm guessing last I heard from the last person I talked to is around sixteen, hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars they've invested in their training. So what's the plan for my, our training building here in Digby? To set up exactly what Metagen has, so two containers stacked side by side with one on top. They're eight feet wide by nine feet six inches tall and forty feet long. One container will be outfitted as a training maze, one container will be outfitted for live burns, and one container for ladder roof operations. There will be railings and stair access for emergency access to go around. In our locations, we would like to look at now is the lot where the old Digby Fire Station was placed, right next to the fire, curtain fire hall, or on Victoria Street, across from Digby Science. Get there. So what we're really needing is just a location that we can possibly use.
We're not, we're not looking for financing, we're not here for financing, we're looking for a location. We picked the location before, we took it to our fire committee, they took it to council. It came back as, as a negative, turned out. Reasons, they had the reasons, and that's fine. We wanted to come here because we think sometimes it may lose between the committee back to the council as a whole, so we wanted to come back and present it to everybody so that we know what we're doing. We're not here looking for X amount of dollars, we're here looking for a location. There are our locations, uh, not only do we have Victoria Street, we also have the south side of the fire station where the lot is, where the parking lot is, uh, some of you may not realize that that lot was, was a house there before. We purchased the lot and we done it, and then we gave, turned it over to the town. So it's money that we bought, we paid for that lot as well, that's all. So we're not looking for money, we're looking for a location, and we're not looking for, uh, we're not pushing, but we're not looking for a location, we started this four year ago and we're still into phase one, phase path, whatever, so we're, we're ready to Financially, we can do, uh, we can do a lot of this ourselves. We have one, municipality has, has contributed, has thrown some money at us as well for this all. And that's because as, with the municipality, we're bringing the other departments to lead, our, our members are visiting next door to us, so we're looking for, so we're really looking for a location and, you know, sometimes.
You, you've got two proposed locations.
There is a third, we would take, we would consider. We'd like to be close to our fire station, A gives us washrooms, kitchen facilities, training facilities where you could lectures, you can bring ones, you know, um, we have, we fill bottles there, we have our cask system, we have our air compressors there, um, so everything is there if we need to look next to, or unless you look next door to us.
So the only one closest to us on the shore side is Metagen, and the next one is?
Yeah.
Waterville?
St. Bernard has a single.
St. Bernard has a single.
They have a single one, yeah.
And then the other way, the next closest?
Then you start realizing you pull us away, we sent ten guys or twelve guys down to Metagen, all of a sudden we have us ten, twelve guys that aren't, aren't here in case you need them. We want to do, we want to do ourselves, we want to do a training, and Steve's done the work as far as you can see what, what we'll do, what we can do, how we'll train all these people, so.
Questions? Mr. May?
Yeah, so I guess as a member of the fire department, um, we used to have a maze on that location over there, so when the lot's there, we'll all mess around. And we used to burn up the, so we purchased as well on the side, so I guess burning wouldn't really get much because we did burn inside that, this is what I'm, I guess.
There's not a lot of burning people, it's, there's not a lot of smoke, it's not like it's going to fill the town with, with, with smoke. We also, we also have a smoke, smoke pit deck for ourselves.
I was going to say, is it actually a fire or is it simulated?
Well, we will do fire, we would do it, you know, a lot of pallets or whatever, but.
Is there a problem? A simulated smoke and?
Yes, 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 yes.
So I think it's a facility that, that is needed, like Steve was saying, you know the house, you know what you're going into. And I think the north side of the fire hall would be, would be my, my best bet, or my proposal would be to put it there instead of Victoria Street. Uh, trucks are already here, hydrants are already here, you're not running up and down Victoria Street, so, and like Chief said with the lectures and stuff, uh, that's probably the prime location for that, and like I said, we've had it there before, so.
It wouldn't require us the odd time to maybe close down from, uh, Percy Williams to, um, whichever street this year, I'm sorry, we only have, you have one resident that lives in that area, other than, other than us, and there's that, so, you know, and it wouldn't be every weekend, so on a day, no. Couple times a year where we say, okay, on a Saturday, we're up. So, but thank you, thank you both, South, you know, as well as us.
Just one more question, so with a live fire one, but it would actually be inside of one of the containers?
It would be inside the container.
Okay.
And it's not a reported fire, like I was saying, it's going to be two pallets, uh, Nick Power, who's the chief down there in St. Bernard, I was talking to him already, they actually have guidelines, they only allow two pallets or maybe three pallets per burn, that's it. So they light two pallets on fire, we go in, put it in, five minutes later, we relight it and repeat.
I'd also like to say, one time in my life, I got a little crazy, and I tried it for the firefighters of Beaumont in Alberta, I made top ten, I got to go in one of these smoke houses, did the confined space and that, it was generating smoke, but it wasn't that bad, like you said, uh, I believe it could maybe work where the mayor says personally, because I've seen it, I've been in it, and, uh, sounds like a great idea, same thing needs to be.
My observation in looking at the one in Metagen, the one in Forest, uh, that, Land Forests, forget which one is, anyway, so, but they're away from urban areas, they're nowhere near.
So the Metagen fire facility?
Yeah.
Is built next to the senior living home?
It was there before the senior living home, wasn't it?
They started to, then they built it next to it.
Yeah. With three containers like you want to do.
Yeah.
Are you looking at that same configuration?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you make a comment about D N R, using the?
Yes, yeah.
Again, those are career, those are paid people.
Right, right. And they're dedicated facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to work, we, we work forty hours a week and, right, on the weekend.
Right, appreciate that. That's our point.
Okay, just one question, so your preferred location is next to the fire hall?
Yes.
And you have everything there you need?
Yes.
And I know you've guys really look, uh, familiar with it, and I know you've really looked into it, but I think on my behalf, we have to take their professional opinion and work with them on that, if that's their preferred location.
I just have one question, did, did this go through the fire committee?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, we actually asked them to come in and do this presentation for the interview.
Oh, thank you, I know.
Yeah, kind of funny, it's new here for you. We're not skipping, we did just skip over this. Have you guys thought it would be best if we had Steve to come in, do the presentation for everybody, so we all have that, so as the chief spoke about, so we all have that equal understanding of what they're looking for, why they want to do it, why they're looking for the location they're looking for. Although we did also talk about, there will be funding that the town would like to commit to it in terms of making sure that we get it on a proper foundation, and working, I think, to help get to, once it's set up, get it equipped with stairs and everything to go up, and, uh, essentially the additions to the building, uh, aside from the, um, the things that you guys are buying, put together, a very technical term for those, uh, containers?
The property in question, council would ask for a survey, but we've talked about it.
Oh, sorry, Council, can I make a motion to bring that council?
Yes, you can entertain that motion.
Second or for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor?
We're all going to the discussion. We're going to the discussion, we'll call a question, all those in favor of that motion, see the pipe, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary mind, the ayes have motions carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you telling us.
We saw guys.
They're forty foot. From there?
The minutes, the three D's, we marked seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. We all had a chance to, we have the minutes, and no changes or errors or revisions. Hear none, after chain of motion for the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded by the mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary mind, motion is carried. Next item of business, Digby Home and Lifestyle Expo, E one. We have someone speaking up?
There was some questions and, oh, wow. Any, anyway, uh, there was question about the hours, and it's Saturday from eight P M to six P M, Sunday was ten A M, four P M. Setup would be all day on Friday. Uh, question about tents, yes, you have to ensure that there's a fire ready tent, most pop-ups are not, so be sure to check on that, and yes, are we going to check there, going to check the five dollar adult weekend addition, so you come back as many times as you want. I guess that's the questions, the answers.
Okay, fantastic. And E two, the letter, Jeanne O'Brien, that was my request, it's nice to see that, thank you very much, staff, just to let her know that we are entering a planning phase for her street where she has some concerns for her children, and no sidewalk there, and some dangerous, uh, fast moving vehicles, so that, fantastic.
If I could, Jeff, um, if we could go back to Eve Moore?
Yes, certainly, yeah.
I think once the information came back, I agreed to decide whether we're going to support it or not, because I believe that was why we asked those questions.
Want to make that a ma, a motion, Mr. May?
I believe it was two ninety-five, I think, was the, was the fee, was it?
What was that?
One ninety-five.
Bust out.
So I would, I would, we take the council, that we approve the, the, the Digby Home and Lifestyle Show.
Okay, I'll second that. Seconded by Councilman Corrigan. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All those contrary mind, the ayes have, motion is carried. Okay, one now, staff reports, at one, Chief Minister, Chief Minister Officer.
Okay. So under the Development Officer, uh, for the previous month, there was three development permits issued, and just in contrast to previous month, there are three, uh, issued, issued three today, so, just to give you that things are picking up in the development world. Um, so thirty-seven West Street for the construction of a twenty-three by six foot deck, uh, water sixty-eight, sixty-three Water Street renovations of two façades of the building, eighty-seven King Street, construction of twelve by eighteen in addition to the single family dwell. The N S U A R V planning appeal matter, uh, number M one-two-zero-six-one, planning appeal. So, um, the N S U A R V, he just changed his name effective April first, twenty twenty-five, to the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeal Board, N S R A B for short. So N S R A B planning appeal matter, um, continues, and the town's motion was denied by the N S R A B, and so he, which was to, uh, reduce the number of appellants, but the appellants are Paul Nicholas Fisher, Laura Di Lanko, murder, some of these names, D S D Costa, uh, Kevin Proctor, Caitlin Hayward, and Caitlin Crosby are agreed persons, and continue as appellants, Yan Joseph is added as an appellant, Connie Everett's last name is changed to Rodrickson, and Angeline Camaro's first name is changed to Angelina, Laura Lee Crosby and Wade Crosby at their own request are removed as appellants. And preliminary hearing regarding the town's standing as a free, priorities was conducted via tele, teleconference before the board on Wednesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty, and no determination was made on how many of the twenty-two appellants qualify as agreed, and, uh, the N S U A R V applies a five hundred foot measurement from the development site to assess standing with thirty-four counts following outside this range. The board has encouraged the, the town and the council to reach an agreement, if no resolution is reached, so basically, that's why we need that as a report of, of the, of the, uh, N S R A B. Further to the decision and order set by the board, next step will be for further preliminary hearing to determine the filing and hearing dates in this matter. The preliminary hearing was held on April seventeenth, during which the procedure of the hearing was outlined for all priorities. The date for the hearing has been reserved for July fourteenth to the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the hearing will be held in Digby, and, uh, I will need to reserve those dates for when I, to, to, uh, another, use of my life, that's, uh, hearings.
Was that, is that your town or the forehouse or?
It's going to be, the, the actual location is yet to be determined, they talked about having, having in this, in council chambers, the appellate field, uh, there's not enough room for all the people that's going to show up, and so we're looking at, at that different, different sector right now, uh, because of what the board requires, like, uh, we're trying to see whether we can use the fire hall, but it's, that's a solid meet from Monday to Friday, to the state church.
So, so the people just see appellants would get to speak in public, or how does that work? Like you said, there wasn't enough room, so I assume there'll be people there just observing.
If somebody, you know, we don't know whether there's going to be anybody with, uh, will file intervene or status, we haven't hit any indication of that yet. So, uh, basically, and the, the thing, everything has to be registered as far as evidence, we have a. We have a timeline of the evidence that the town is going to provide to the developer and the accounts, certain dates that they have to follow us with the board so that all that information can be sent out publicly and sent out to all, all parties, right? So when you have a hearing, like discovering, right?
So I guess another question is, is one citizen reached out to send a petition into the board in favor of it? Is there people, will people have an opportunity, or is there a deadline for people who are for the project to speak?
I, I think that those people won't be able to, but there is that they have to check with the board to find how they get on, on the docket, we call like submissions.
Right.
Like there will be submissions.
So is there any way you can let us know how, how that process is done? So we can, if people ask, we can give them the information to, to speak or to have an opportunity?
Yeah. I think that, that particular, I don't know, did he reach out to the board? That was the last?
Yes, he did. He sent it in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he did send that in. That was last. It wasn't accepted as evidence.
I don't know. I, we, it had been brought up from the board's perspective. But after a certain timeline, it's, it's everything will have to, have to be. He may just be notified that it's been accepted and you have standing to be able to give evidence of your issue.
Right, so the people on his list, if that is accepted as evidence, are they allowed to, to speak because they're on the list?
That I couldn't tell you. I'm not the gentleman. I know that we have twenty-two intervenor, not intervene, twenty-two appellants.
Yeah.
But they have to register what they want to say beforehand, so those twenty-two cannot just show up at the hearing and randomly spout off. There are things they have to, because we, the town and the developer has to know how, in case we want to respond to that. You can't respond to anything that just comes out of a conversation.
So it's a lot of, yeah.
Do you know how long before the, before the hearing that that information has to be given to the town?
It's probably, yeah, I, probably, you have a preliminary list of different dates.
But it's, I just, yeah, you don't have to know, but it would be nice to, you have.
I can, I can pass that on. Building inspection in previous month, there were two building permits issued. Eighty-seventh King Street, construction of twelve eighteen in addition to the single family dwelling. One thirty-sixth West Street, it's a renovated single family dwelling. Okay, so before I leave the development slash building section, I just want to make counsel aware of an application that we received today that I did deny. It was a false application. And apparently, there was an addition to the garage that was already an existing building. It'd been filled in that and it didn't have side yard distance, it didn't have enough. So they said you, you could, if they modified the width of it, to give you the two feet, then you do it. Said, well, I'll have to tear down that because it's already built. So anyway, we have denied the development permit for the reason that doesn't meet the, meet the land use setbacks. And the building department and our building inspector will be dealing with it as well because he was the one that noticed that it was being built. And said, you asked for the permits, and he said, no, I haven't got one. And so, and they show up today with an application and didn't say anything until less than questioned on the setbacks and given the options. And that's when they said, I'll, I'll probably have to tear it down. So I think that probably through the building department, they require to tear it down. So just to give the council sort of a heads up, so that it will be taken place in case your phone starts to ring. But it's part of the regulations, so that's what we have. And he's close enough that he's already encroaching on the neighbor's, his neighbor's property, so. But yeah, we have not heard from the neighbor. So. Fire inspections, so there were no fire inspections conducted last month. I know that we've been sending some in this month. And so it will be next month. The NSUARV fire inspection appeal, there's an ongoing appeal filed with the Nova Scotia City and Review Board. With Fundy Restaurant. And the town's legal, townhood representative, the town and its fire inspector in this matter. New hearing dates have been set for April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We accompany the fire inspector at this hearing, so.
Where's that one, Tom?
Monday, it's coming, Monday, it's a no, it's a no fact. We'll get a good no fact for this one. That's why we're very adamant that the planning one needed to be in, in the. And so, anyway. Fire department, fire department responded to eleven calls in February. We have six alarm soundings, one ammonia leak, one motor vehicle collision, one defective hot water heater, hot water heater. One investigate smoke, one struck the fire. So that was in February, so nine town calls and two municipality. And for March, there were thirteen calls, three alarm sounding, two flooded basement, one smell of propane, four motor vehicle collisions, one chimney fire, one vehicle fire, one grass fire. So five calls in the town and eight municipality. The office of the C A L. The NSF M, we've received the required twelve months notice of any provincial legislation, regulation, or industry actions that could have an effect on increasing revenues or increasing the required expenditures of municipalities. This notice is intended to provide notice of such changes for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and beyond. Under Department of Justice, H Division Royal Canadian Mounted Police Annual Walter Year Financial Plan. So H Division Royal Canadian Mounted Police have provided the Department of Justice with the Annual Walter Year Financial Plan that reflects the organization's budget, requests for the next fiscal year, and strategic planning for subsequent years. Based on the twenty-five, twenty-six NYFP and provincial approvals, the total financial impact for the new provincial police services agreement to municipalities is eight million. That's province wide, but we'll get our fair share. Biological casework analysis agreement. So the biological casework analysis agreement provides municipalities with DNA analysis arising from criminal investigations. Cost will be determined upon the release of the total uniform assessment by Department of Municipal Affairs. And Department of Governmental Affairs, procurement thresholds, and free trade agreements. So the period of January twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five are as follows, under the CF TA, municipality, it's a mass of goods of one hundred thirty-three thousand eight. And services of one thirty-three eight and destruction is three hundred thirty-four, four hundred. For the CDA slash CTA, or prevent droughts in municipalities and mass, our goods are three hundred fifty-three, three hundred. And services are the same and destruction is eight point eight million. Coastal protection, the provinces that announced on several actions under the future of our coastline. Nova Scotia's plan to protect people, homes, and nature from product chains. The plan is fifteen actions to empower coastal property owners and support municipal leadership to protect coastal communities and properties. Officials from Nova Scotia Environment and Planet Change are available on April sixteenth at two PM to provide a brief overview and answer your questions. And the announcement of the details are example land use bylaws text for municipalities to use in regulating development along the coast, zoning land use planning, and building regulatory processes. These example bylaws are, were informed by ongoing dialogue with Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities and municipalities that represent. The example bylaws provide flexible options that municipalities can use to protect homes, buildings, and other infrastructure from floodwater, coastal flood erosion, and rising sea levels. They include regulatory options for municipalities to create a defined area where coastal protection regulation will apply. Set a minimum building elevation to protect from coastal flooding and create a buffer zone to protect buildings from coastal erosion. In response to the feedback shared by the province, with the province, whether NSFM and on behalf of the members of the province, is providing the NSM, NSFM, one million funding over three years to support municipalities in adopting and implementing these bylaws. Funding for NSFM to hire a climate change policy analysis to support municipalities. Several new tools and resources for coastal property owners to help them make informed decisions to safeguard their property. A customized coastal hazard assessment report for coastal property owners. These detailed reports available free of charge to coastal property owners show flooding and erosion lists tabled to the specific property, along with resources and recommendations to help make them inform, make, help them make informed decisions about how they can safeguard the property. These reports can also be used by those considering buying property along the coast to help them make informed buying decisions. Updates of the coastal hazard map launched on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to show data for current day and year twenty fifty and to expand the data to more than a hundred meters from the coastal, from the coast. A mature based solutions guide to help coastal property owner protect themselves from coastal flooding and erosion. And in partnership with the Nova Scotia Association of Realtors, a checklist and educational video to help Realtors, help buyers of coastal property make informed decisions. And more information on these initiatives is available at the coastal climate change government of Nova Scotia, Canada. So I was unable to attend the Wednesday afternoon session that they put on for the A and A members. But I did take in the C A R mayor board session. Go on, major, I'm here.
I know this was bombshell dropped right in the middle of our prep, like consultation and review of our documents. Are we at a point now where we want to review that again and have another public session to talk about these?
So they basically, this would update here and there, but I think we were going to get to coastal erosion. Policies that we talked about, our residential zoning policies and, and the uses in that. But well, the inner strategy, we're still going to add a section that we have to deal with coastal erosion. So we haven't got it in there yet. I don't think we're going to have to come full stop in the back when we go. But we will be hitting this probably once we get the commercial and industrial done. Because development isn't just residential development. It's going to be commercial development up in coastal areas, so.
It's going to impact our timeline, do you think? It'll add one to it, sir.
It'll add some to it, not, not a great amount, I don't think. Especially if they, if they provide us with the tools that we need to with the sample bylaws and stuff like that.
I know this was kind of, I wondered that why NSFM didn't respond and make an alteration, alteration to the agenda in our conference and talk to some.
They may yet still.
But we could hear from them.
Yep.
Questions for the C A L?
Yes, Tom, on that one, on that coastal protect, coastline protection. Is that not going to be province-wide, or each municipality possibly going to have different regulations?
I, 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 yeah, the option is out there. Everyone needs, because the, the coastline now, one thing that Minister of Environment said in his presentation was that, you know, the reason, because, you know, it was asked again why the province sort of backed off and pushed it off to municipalities. And he said provincial regulations run out of Halifax and not one size fits all, so to speak. So municipalities, your MPS and L E Bs that you deal with, your coastline is different, maybe different than coastline in some other places, right? If you get up on the Northumberland Strait, most of that coastline is sand and stuff that erodes very, very quickly. Right, we, we have some of that down, down here in Digby.
Yeah, south end.
South, south end, but we don't, not to the extent that other places.
I was just curious if there'll be a minimum standard and then municipalities get to apply extra standards on that?
They're just going to be suggestions from the province and not, because they, they backed away from. They're going to supply us with some noise, but they're not going to say there's a regulation.
Does that mean if a municipality decides not to afford coastline protection? They can avoid it? They can ignore it?
I would say that, I, I would say that no, they are not going to be able to avoid it because your MPS has to go to the province to be approved, right? And if they don't see anything in there, they'll say, well, we have coastal protection. We need to have within here city back here. So if we don't have it in our plan, our amended plan, then they're not going to prove our amended plan until we put something to deal with our coastal erosion.
But some municipalities may have a lesser protection than others, is what it looks like.
Yeah, and that, you know, there could be, yeah. There could be some municipalities that may not have any coastline tidal type coastline, they may have rivers and streams. They may have rivers and streams or lakes, right? Which are different than tidal action, right? Bigby here, you know, on this side of the, up the valley on the north, the mountain range is all tidal that we have to deal with, right? And stream, stream tidal action.
Weather.
And weather and else.
Okay, just curious how much guidance or what's going to be from the province on that?
There'll be, there'll be some, but it's stepping back and making regulations. They're just going to tell you, you know, it's still going to be up to the municipal unit to determine, you know, based on.
Have they given us guidelines to say, just suggest new texts?
Yeah. So we're.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. This looks like to me, it's like it's limited funding, so I mean, shouldn't we be planning for this ASAP? Get in there, imagine Pam Booth all over this right now, of course she's there.
But I get the question is what, plan for what, right?
So then?
No, 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 what, what do you want to spend money on, right? Do you need to hire an expert?
That's what I mean.
That's the conversation, yeah.
We need to get the, because plans take time, like, you know, and I believe probably we have some fast movers up there.
That's probably number one, or next, uh.
Yeah, I would say that, million dollars for problems.
Not much.
That's enough. It's a joke. Drop in the bucket and it's not going to. And I don't even know if they set the criteria of advocacy in that.
Right, doesn't even look like it's delegated, it's just whoever.
And the other thing, it may be controlled through the NSFM. My thoughts are that some of the other funding they put through the NSFM and let them administer the funds, right?
Has that typically been first to the trough gets the money?
Well, not necessarily, but, you know, yeah. It depends on, on what it is, yeah. On that.
Question? Yes, go ahead, Joe. A few months ago, we had that, that representative come do a presentation. Was she not supposed to send out some type of report? She came here with Andrea that night.
Yeah, that was.
She's a coastal, coastal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is she supposed to send out a report?
But was that not before the province? Yeah, that was before the province made the decision not to go through the act.
Okay, so they asked her?
Well, they probably reassign the program.
Yeah, to a communications department and then I asked her from there. But actually, a question on the, on the Coastal Protection Act that they got rid of. Has the province been willing to, and it's possible they already gave this an email. Have they been willing to give that, the information that they use to come up with that act to NSFM? Because if they share the data that they have, the government will do nearly the finish line on, or I guess the finish line that just didn't cross, that would be a whole long way to making it. So no wonder they have to spend any great amount of money, aside from spending some to come up with your policy put in place. But has anyone officially asked for that information? Or is that something that we can get NSFM to ask the province for? Because I don't know if there's any point in everyone redoing the exact same thing over again just to come up with information that already exists.
They sounded like the, the criteria that the province was making was simply too aggressive and there was a lot of pushback in front of that store or whatever.
Okay, well, it's a good question to ask any C F N. I'm sure they have data that's not really linked to the hospital data itself that we potentially use.
Yeah, the decision not to go here was simply partisan politics, right? Because the act was a liberal incentive. They started with a local government and.
You don't have a gang.
That's just one way I'd see it, you know, that's why they backed off on it, right?
And yeah, that's for the CIO. Oh, yeah, one more.
So we are going to get staff to look into this, NSFM, or?
Or get.
Do you want to send a question to NSFM?
I think we should.
Do you want the staff to do that, Tom, please?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Director of Public Works. All right, so the twenty twenty four annual report for the Dikby Water Commission has been concluded and sent to NSC C for review. So I'm working on a detailed report for the age force main that pumps placed water from lift station three to the armory block. That's the force main that runs along West Blacks. The last break that we had was actually in the armor rock. So the armor rock at Dikby Center actually covers the force main for about fifteen to sixty meters. So if we were to sustain a break out of that armor rock, we're going to be in such a pickle that I don't know what we would do because it's not safe for our employees to fix anything out of the armor rock. So I believe we have added some to the capital budget for consideration. But I will, I will have, oh, sorry, but it would be the solution. The solution would be you would have a look at running the force main basically down the center line of the water street. Yep. So that's why. Yeah, so that's, that's why I'm bringing it up tonight because we need to be everybody.
Escape program.
Hey, it's a good, for the funding, hmm. I don't think you have any.
What would happen, where you got water?
Come on, I don't know where else you put it. All right, I don't know where else you would put it. Buy a whole bunch of buildings and turn them down and put it there, like, very, I just, that's the only place that people would like, that's it.
Crazy.
Yeah, so, so once I have the, we'll have some pictures and stuff too. I do have some of the pass breaks and stuff and the patience stuff, so we can see what, what we were looking at and what we've dealt with over the years too, so. Um, conditional management plan is due by the end of April. So just a few other things. I've done the site visits for the airport, municipal office and the arena. I've also done some of the town buildings too, including town hall. And that's for accessibility upgrades, or for the accessibility committee, I should say. So I will be doing a complete report for each building that we assess so that they can have it for accessibility committee for review. So they are more extensive reports and also something you can do in an hour or so. Ready, I was, it's a day, two days for each, each building to report. So I'm just fitting them in as I can, a couple hours, half a day at a time. So once I have them done, then I'll pass them on, so. Just under wastewater, the monster has been rebuilt and is back in place at the main lift station. So any or I have pump two and four, the main lift station are both not working. They've both been repaired since I completed the report. Just for reference, as everybody knows, we did put out ninety four bags of coal ash during the month of March. And currently, in the month of April, we're over, we're over a hundred bags we put in to fix the bottles around town. The type of winter we had was just, just hard on the roads, the thought of the ice in the evening and the vine. It make things, make damage really bad. The two worst roads were Shore Road and Drury, so everybody knows.
Just so you know, that our roads are nowhere near in as bad shape as Yarmouth or Kenbod.
Because, because I laugh because I'm pretty sure I've said it in our meetings, go to Yarmouth. Because their back roads are bad.
They're in the back, they're mean, that's.
The main roads are, yeah, so it's not, it's everywhere. And our roads are in good shape, prepared a lot of times especially, so, yeah. And under equipment, yes, you do, we're still, we still have the outstanding recall. Still don't have the parts repaired. And the new tractor and attachments have arrived at Public Works. Just under building maintenance, we've had all the heat pumps cleaned in our buildings. That includes all the inside unit pits, as everybody's aware. Just to bring up the building on Main Street, the old school, we've had to rip up the ramp and fix the back door where the food bank is. So the guys ripped the ramp up today. They've built it all, built back and, built, built again, back in place. All new plywood, all new stringers, everything to build the ramp. And tomorrow, they're going to tile on the floor and then be basic wood and the heaters to go back in. And we did do all that work in house, so we were able to save a lot, a lot of labor doing ourselves. And the other side of the building, as everybody can probably tell, we're going to have to consider a painting job sometime in the future, not saying this year, but it's, it's getting there again. And under capital projects, I've been working with CIO on the third avenue, West Street extension and getting a tender completed, so I can go with pretenders sometime hopefully soon. Uh, transfer stations back to normal operation hours, three hours, Monday to Friday, nine to five, and then Saturday, eight to noon. And we did, we did complete our fall arrest, fall arrest in Quonie Space Force, Public Works. And we're going to be taking a few more courses, Lonco Tego. And some of us will be taking transportation of dangerous goods. And the reason for that is because of the oil and gas that we have on site. In order to send our empty tanks back, we have to have that course. So you have to have a certified person sign off that the tanks are empty. And I guess the last thing is I did complete another course to the University. This one was municipal law and it was a very extensive course. And it required a lot, a lot of time to do it in the nights and the weekends. And funny, funny enough, the last course, the last assignment was on tent camps within, within Canada. So it was very interesting when you talk about housing and what you have to do as a municipal unit to support tent camps.
I have a couple of questions for you. What's the status of our generation ones for town hall?
Um, so construction will start in June, yeah.
And my other question was, the heat pumps at the fire hall and the locks for the thermostat?
Yes, we've had the thermostats all, all changed. I just have to sit down with Robbie and Adrian, so that they're going to have access to them and so will I. So that they can change the monitoring in them. I did, well, I think it was last week, I went on the phone, I just tried explaining to them how to change the temperatures on them, because somebody had actually gone into it and changed it back to that same mode, keep it cool at the same time. So we've locked it down, so they can't do that.
Okay, and the same at the public washrooms?
Yes.
And when are they going to be?
Uh, they'll be May first, yeah, or whatever, Friday is, I haven't checked the calendar, but yeah. So they're being, they're being cleaned this week, so they'll be, they'll be ready to open.
Stupid question, maybe stupid for that. It was over the fire hall the other day, where Joe and I were putting together the bingo packages and temperature was like sixty three when we got in there. And we turned lights on, like an hour later, it was like sixty seven. What kind of light bulbs are you in there?
We're slowly changing the LED, so they would be T eights, I believe, a lot of them. But not, they're all, not all changed over to the LED.
It actually got, got hot in there.
Dead?
It was like, it went up like four or five degrees like in an hour.
Yeah, and they, they would, they would produce heat, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them in there, so.
Yeah.
Ever tried to change it one after they just burned it?
No.
They're, they're toasty.
See, the thing too is when you have bingo and stuff on in there, we used to have to adjust it all the time. That's obviously why.
Yeah.
So I guess when they changed that, we had too many people in there. We were doing that constantly, right?
And like I said, Adrian and Robbie both have access to it.
They don't do it in.
For a reason, but it's, it's not hard to change.
Yeah, but.
The point is, we need to add the person before, that person's phone. It's just a limited access so that not everybody can go up, down, change mode, that's, that's the issue.
It's like, change.
Yeah, and that's something that everybody would like to do, something to look at. So a lot of the time you can get some good money through, because you know, Nova Scotia to do it, so, yeah.
That is amazing, without that hot. Joe's like, yes, getting hot in here. It was getting warm.
That Q chair, he touched on the Washington one, I wanted to talk about that's great, May first. But I did get some major backlash, a million times over about that tree downtown by the man's hands. My goodness, nightmare, how many people messaged me about that and wondering, now are we going to plant a tree there? But the main concern was, nobody knew about it. They thought it was not dead, they didn't know it was dead. They even, I touch base with Tom CIO. And we're just maybe looking for heads up next time, so it probably makes people aware. I didn't know what to say to him until I figured it out.
Yeah, I can, I can give you a little better heads up if you like. So basically, the tree got cut, but we had, was in the town. It was something that we talked about last fall, cutting the tree down, that's what it was supposed to be removed. And he had made arrangements to be on that, that week before, on the Thursday, he was to come down and cut the tree down. So the tree had Dutch elm disease and you could see it in the fall, how, after the tree had already died. So it's, that's why it was cut down to try to prevent it from spreading to the couple, the couple of trees that we have left. Because we don't have many elms left and, because once they start to blossom, that's when the disease spreads. Because the wind carries it from tree to tree to tree, so, yeah.
Uh, second, thank you for that. Second, maybe those, if we cannot get the LEDs put in, there is possibility of their electronic valves that we could put a dimmer in as well at that point. Just a quick, easy fix compared to replacing everything, just a heads up, thank you.
Just give me.
Yeah, just, just back to the trees, just for counsel, we have professionals, those trees, no offense. But it's not us that decide on the trees, so if people do ask, we do have a professional, what are they called?
An archer.
That's it, so, so we just don't go randomly cut down trees, so.
I told you, you don't know what you want.
And people, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if people cut down a tree in their yard, they have to ask permission, right?
No.
No?
Not in their yard, no.
Okay.
Not if it's on their property.
Yeah.
But if, if it's a dangerous tree, if it's dying or in danger of falling, because this is, we, we can, under dangerous in sight, we order them to cut it. But they don't have to ask permission to cut the trees on their own land, right? We just have to ensure that we're not cutting the, our trees along, along the streets that they can find there.
True, I kind of drove by sands the other day, I made a wrecked fence around the church. And I thought, okay, great, keep good people out, and then I thought, did that steeple ever fell on a highway? That would be across the street so far, you know, I kind of chuckled like, that fence isn't.
Maybe the small pieces are falling off.
Maybe say, oh, absolutely.
I just had a question too, we talked about on the executive, being Princess Helena painting.
Yes.
And so did we call?
Yeah, so what, what do we want to do, that I guess?
We just wanted to put, I would suggest that, try and just put it there so it doesn't get damaged anymore.
So we have a hole in the old Christian statue building right now, so it's all covered up with a tar. So if you'd like to put it up, then we can get that last one from.
Yep, okay, great. Any other questions for the Director of Public Works?
Hearing that, we'll move on to the Director of Finance.
Okay, so the report is there, so the rough graph of the, of the capital budget is what I just handed out before the meeting for you. I want to move into that today, that's really just for you to, to look at. And I talked with the CIO just before, earlier this afternoon, just as a last minute thought that we could use it at tomorrow night at the open house. If, and I guess I should say if council is comfortable with that. I know it's hot off the press and it's very rough and you only, you only have a short period of time to look at it. So I guess I'm asking, are you comfortable that I use that as a handle tomorrow? Or discuss some points so that people can ask.
My point, my point of view, ask me tomorrow.
Yes, same.
I, I guess the biggest thing, Matthew, is that people, it's like when people don't realize that it's eighteen hundred dollars per firefighter, you know, and I mean, for them, that's a good, a good display for tomorrow night. But I think people just need to be aware, like when you do the pie with the percentage things type thing and how much it actually costs for our C and B or stuff like that, I think that's.
But you can keep it more high level and we don't need to get into the details, it's fine. Because I know, I know it's very last minute, we just thought about it at the end of the day today, actually.
And the biggest thing too tomorrow is, is like a, a brief presentation there and that getting up to the booths and meeting people and then they can, you know, ask those questions and stuff there. But I think, I think, yeah, you don't really need to detail, detail a lot, right? But whatever, you did it before, like it was.
Yeah, no, I can do something that's, that's high level and rough. I just wondered if you wanted to have that available as a handle, but it's probably a little, a little soon for that.
Yeah, it's probably a little soon for that, I think.
It is good information that I can't.
It is good information, and I kind of, it was a little chafing when he said, you know, town, I think we haven't contributed any money.
I know.
No, but we have paid for an awful lot.
I know, yeah, I know.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't want to tie you down, uh, looking at that right now, homework for everybody to, for your bedtime pleasure, it's an exciting reading. Um, the, so the operating budget, uh, haven't really worked on that, just working on the spreadsheets, getting it set up. Um, insurance for the year, uh, up again, six point five percent, that's one of our bigger expenses, so it's now up to a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, doesn't seem, seems to keep outpacing the CPI, I don't know how it manages to do that, but insurance seems to be getting more and more expensive in real dollar terms. The fuel tank storage liability coverage did go down a small amount, at small dollars, though, because, uh, it was the deductible from five thousand to ten thousand, I just raised that to be more consistent with the rest of our deductibles, and, uh, realistically, we're not gonna be putting in any claims under ten thousand dollars if we have fuel spilling anywhere. So HSD, I know you're all aware, uh, April first, that changed fifteen to fourteen percent, uh, it does reduce our, our costs a hair, it reduced them by point four percent, we don't save the full percent because we don't get the full amount of HST back originally, just to, you can only get a portion, so a little bit of a savings, and when we sell things, uh, rentals, we, we charge less now. So procurement, uh, I know the CIO's report mentioned the specific tariff amounts, and I think, this was just from an FCM, uh, information that came out, uh, what was interesting out of it though, that, uh, the North American Agreement, the KUSMA, Canada-US-Mexico Agreement, uh, does not apply in municipalities, and, and so it's, we don't need to look at those thresholds to deal with that. Um, the next one is the, the town lot on Queen Street, adjacent to the Justice Center, and I just bring this up just to make people aware, this is another parking lot, similar to the one we looked at previously beside the medical center, so same thing, we, we basically don't have any signage, um, I don't think it's used nearly as much, uh, and I think the only maintenance that we do, maybe just cutting back the brushes and, and that sort of thing, just making sure the alders don't grow in, as far as I know, so just want to bring that to council's attention, and see if they want to make any, any adjustments there, or, you know.
Do we have any claims over there, any follow-up?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I did reach out and look at some research on that course thing I was emailing you about there, um, it looks like you can save a lot of money in the insurance of just your premiums, your, of course, the WCB now, that, that's a thing that we gotta do with everybody, whatnot, um, property insurance, uh, overall insurance programs, stuff like that, and what I see in there is almost a five percent discount on a lot of things, just, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that if you didn't, you should check that out, be a core member through Construction Safety, it might be an option for us, it's always worth shoving up, checking it out.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure municipal insurance is so specific to municipalities, um, the, I can certainly, uh, send an email to our broker, uh, but I don't know, are you aware of, sorry, any, any of the, uh, construction, uh, association safety, uh, ability to lower interest rates, are we a member of, or, the acronym is CORC?
Yeah, yeah, I have the certification from L West, it's a National Code Safety Officer Course.
Yeah, we had a presentation at NSFM in the fall, Council, we're and I both attended it, I guess he gave you the card on that, so it might be something to look into.
So it's on the air.
Yeah.
Just to bring everybody back, did we actually reach a decision on the hospital parking lot?
Well, I think we were gonna close it off, right?
We're gonna drop committee, don't we?
So can we block off one by the courthouse as well, just so we're consistent?
Yeah, we offered the court something, and they didn't oblige or something, we tore that down. They use it now quite a bit, you know?
I don't think I've ever seen very many cars in that one. When they had the big, the bigger trials and stuff?
Yes.
It is used quite frequently, yes. So it still opens us up tomorrow night, but when...
Well, we can block it off, and then if they, one of them goes to death, that will open up.
Sure.
Uh, discussion, okay, you want that, we want something.
That's right.
We can put the fire hall thing up there.
Would it be a big expense to block that off?
No, we, when we did the master project, we purchased eight or ten of the big jersey barriers, the four footers, four feet high, six feet, six or eight feet long, we already have them, so.
Be a great place to store them?
There's no capacity to do it, so.
Yeah, be a great place.
That's funny.
Probably take four there, and then two or three over by the hospital, we have them ourselves, huh?
Yeah.
It's not gonna cost anything.
Yeah, we talked about, uh, when we do the one by the hospital, we do the lines first, so in the springtime, have the lines painted for the angle parking, and then block it up, I'd say, yeah, yeah.
Directional, really?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Continue, sir.
So, on, on the pension, we had talked about it at the, uh, management meeting, and so I looked into the, to the pension a little bit, just, just basically asking questions of the odd employees as I saw them, and talked to, uh, the CIO of the municipality, um, and just to get a feel for, uh, what they thought of switching to the, the provincial plan, so I know now the municipality has, and Dark has, um, and at this point, we really don't have a lot of information on it, it's, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of investigation, so it's really, the question is just, is council interested in the doing, for us, management doing the investigation, um, uh, to determine if, if it's, you know, is it worth looking into the pros, cons, and, and the cost to employees, and cost to the town, uh, to see, to do a switch? Not to do, actually do the switch, but to just look into the, determining the pros and cons, uh, and the cost to employees, and the cost to employers, the town.
Just, just have to wonder why, at this point in time, we have a budget coming up, what spurred you to look into that change?
We, we had talked about it at, um, management meeting, at once or twice, I think, um, and I think prior to that, uh, Public Works staff had said to Ed, are you, um, are we looking at it? And, uh, and then it came up at management meeting, so management meeting, yeah, let's, let's look, let's at least start looking, and so now it's at that point, do you want us to, um, dig into this, now that we at least have enough knowledge to, to know what it is?
Does the, uh, does the province have, like, as soon as the provincial plan that they have that you're looking, that you're looking at, do, do they have like a one pager that you can send up to the employees of the town and Public Works, and then essentially put it to them to see if it's something that they would be interested in? Because at the end of the day, it's, you know, effectively, although, comes through council and all of that, it's, it's the employees' plan more than it's, it's council's plan, uh, and I'm sure you guys have done lots of little polls and stuff before, and Leslie's pretty good at putting those up, maybe just have a simple, you know, yes or no.
And, yeah, and I mentioned that we'd go to staff, see what they think, and we'd have to go to council, see what council thinks, um, it's, it's a big process, then there would be one-on-one sessions with, uh, some pension experts who could tell individuals, hey, here's how individually you would fare, you know, you're gonna, you can buy back X number of years, or you can't buy back X number of years, or, um, I do know from the municipality that they basically had to fully switch, they couldn't continue both plans, but, but you're right, I see it, does council want me to begin the process, at least come up with a plan, have a look at this, you know, find, investigate a bit, um, get some information, throw that information out to staff, see what their questions are, then make a poll, see what employees want to do, you know, do we want to get down the road, that's the only question at this point.
I guess defined contribution plans are an old thing, it's kind of the oldest sort of form of pension. I went through this whole process, actually, when I was employed, it was, it was a cost to the employer at the end.
Yeah, it looks like the municipality, well, there's two rates, I can't remember exactly what they were paying, one was eight and a half percent, and one was ten nine, they were over a certain, no, they were over a certain threshold, the YMPE for the, for the year, so it's a blended, a blended rate, um, it sounded like it would be more, a bit more expensive for the, for the council, for the town.
I guess we had a few issues a while back with Ed, when we talked about employees as well, he didn't want to pay a higher, he couldn't get employees, I don't know what the fact that would have, as well, because Ed, Ed couldn't hire employees because he didn't want to pay the benefit, right? So I guess...
Yeah, I, I think Ed brought it up at one of the previous management meetings, and said, you know, retention and, and hiring, it could help.
Is it a third option to, uh, just sort of cap what there is now and go to a RSP?
Like, yes, do anything, um...
I mean, if you're looking to save money, right? Those options would cost us more money, I don't, like, looking at options that cost us more money.
Um, yeah, it can, it's basically removing their pension plan, offering some matched money for an RSP.
Whatever the, or whatever ends up being. I guess in the effect of the long, employees were here for a long while, because at the agreement, we went through it, some people were there for a long time, and they didn't, did nothing else, so.
They didn't like what they moved?
Yeah, so they, they opted out, and they just didn't do it, so, they retired, but I mean...
Yeah, basically, you're, you're re-ciring, you're taking your money, and, and you're not enrolling in the new plan, and you're, you're using your money as you see fit in your era, it's a, it's like an RSP, but locked in with a lot of rules.
Yeah, I know, one employee threw a gap on it, and I guess, you know, you have employees who you're like daring them, and joy, and, you know, people who are good a long time, so I don't know if it's all or nothing, like someone just asks, and everybody asks whether or not, right?
Yeah, well, that, and that's, that's what I said, is, this is really gonna be what do the employees want, and, yeah, and what, and both the employees and council has to want, or it's a no-no.
So, in terms of employee retention, at Public Works specifically, because I've heard Ed talk about that, what's the issue? You're either in the pension plan, or you're not in the pension plan, is the pension plan too expensive to be in? Is that what the issue is?
No, I think the issue is that a defined benefit pension plan is far more appealing to new hires, and often to existing people, it's preferred by the employee, defined contribution plans are not as, uh, if you're an employee seeking work, and there's equal opportunities here and here, generally people like the defined benefit plan, the security of it is, is much better.
That's true.
Does it guarantee results at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not at the risk of the market, you're not, you have the surety of knowing...
I guess, I don't know what council thinks, but to me, it's, it's an issue that has to be decided by staff before it comes back to council, that's where you start.
Well, and that's the question, do you even want me to start, like, or do I just close the books on this one, and we're done? That's the, that's, that's what I'm asking.
And Robbie, that is a situation where if we decide to close the books on it, the, the, the staff are going to ask us, well, tell us what it is, how's it working, it'll get worse if we don't look at it than if we actually do put something in front of them to, to do it, but I, my thought would be, ask, see, see if they're interested in it, uh, maybe, uh, the folks sitting there, well, there, over there, yourself, might all go, nah, we talked about it, but we don't want it, but I'm gonna guess it's probably the other side of the folks, who probably would like to have the information, and especially with the potential higher cost coming off of their paycheck, they'll want to know what that difference is, because, yeah, there's defined benefits, so you get a guarantee from retirement time, here's what I have, plus the cost today versus pay option, so, um, I mean, I, I would say, go, go to the staff and ask them, and most likely, the response back, yeah, we'd like more information on it to be able to, um, make a decision, at which point then we, you know, bring it to council, and you put the numbers in front of us, and say, is it, you know, afford?
Certainly a long process.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see this happening in less than a year.
And I will even give you, I guess, the insight from what I have, is that it might be a little better now than it was previous months, but I know the folks from the province have been, uh, stretched a little bit thin in trying to get to some of the municipal units that they've been working with to get folks moved over, uh, so getting answers to questions at, at times has been, uh, a little bit of a delay, uh, because we'll get folks asking us, so we can bring it to them, although some of our investment specialists can, but for the most part, they're getting questions from the province, so, um, I probably have to start this sooner than, than later in terms of looking for information, because it, it could take a while as they're on board, and a lot of, a lot of evidence.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, key, key questions I see when I'm doing my research on this is the potential of hiring more people because of this, right? Not so much what we have now, we're gonna need to hire people down the road, right? So what is, what they are looking for, and like you say, Matt, there, it's appealing to some people that change, I, I know, because I know what it is, but that's also something we gotta make sure we look into.
It's very individual, yeah, what stage of life for you, are you a young worker, an older worker?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, you work with Leslie and Tom, and trying to figure out the employees there.
So, um...
Sure.
Can I just suggest that maybe, uh, you should get hired an independent manager?
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Did, did, do it, and that way you take it to all staff's hands, you know what I'm saying? I'm saying that, not if you can't do a good job, but if you can do a good job, the thing is, someone could say, well, you're biased, right? They could say that, they could say I'm biased, they could say Ian's biased, they could say anything like that, and I, the reason I'm saying that, back in twenty twelve, when we had our organization overview done, right, we, we hired consultants, and they came in, and they individually interviewed every last staff person, right? And they took that, and compiled it, and then they came back with an unbiased recommendation, right? As to what staff would like, and I guess that's, I, I just sort of have a, how, how do you get staff to answer from internal, uh, questionnaire?
Privacy thing.
Or, or, because you know that, that well, that we're gonna...
Everybody gets...
Everybody goes, hey, what did you have to do? You know, or try to influence, when you can then have an interview with some, believe, then you leave, it's a lot like when we have our pension review, if you can, right, you meet with your advisor, and you go over your file, and you don't bother taking anybody else's file, or whatever, and what else thinks, or whatever, just concentrate on that, and you get a solid answer, so for, I guess if council is, wants to look at it seriously, I guess that's what I would think that we would, uh, my suggestion would be maybe to look for a financial advisor, would be independent financial advisor, and not, no connection with our current pension plan, because I could be biased, and as well, or seem deemed to be biased, and, uh, and, you know, to Council McCormick, saying about the province, having people, or, or they can be biased, and it's theirs as well, right, so.
Yeah, touchy subject.
You know, if council wants to proceed in the investigation of, of pensions and go from defined contribution to a defined benefit plan. And when they get done the report, they have the pros and cons of both and also what the staff, diversity of staff walks.
I think we.
Quicker than the rest.
Quicker.
You had our pension in on that too?
Our pension.
Just waiting to see your first contribution.
Geez, he got me.
So I guess we'll need a motion to send that to council.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. We send it.
Second, Councilor Weir, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The ayes, ayes, ayes. Okay, W C B?
Uh, yeah, so the W C B is just an odd item that came up, uh, January twenty twenty five meeting, N S F A L E S will not see an increase in workplace injury insurance rates for firefighters due to the expanded coverage to nineteen presumptive cancers. I didn't even look into where they were, uh, increasing it. And I think there were some other correspondence from the F C M. Might be more news coming, coming out on that. I'm not sure, Tom, if you're aware of what else is happening there, but.
I'll have more news on that on the fire committee.
Okay.
We're not meeting that's.
Okay.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Mayor? I didn't hear you. Sorry, um, the fire committee that are on with N S F A N are looking into that stuff too. Great. So, yeah, what I plan to do is once we have the minutes of those meetings approved, I'll send them out to, tell them, you can send them out to staff, to council.
Okay. So the, the next item, the Blue Root Safe Water Meeting, I wasn't even aware this came, this Blue Root came out of the blue. Uh, but it was interesting to hear, um, somebody from the province actually, an engineer from the province actually looking at this and the, what's his name? Nathan Tuck, Director of Blue Root and Cycling Advisory at Cycling Nova Scotia. It was just at least nice to hear them talking about it in our area. I'm sure you've probably heard, or maybe you've heard of Blue Root around the province. It's where they designate areas for cyclists to go and they market it internationally and, and will map them and, and let people know where you can ride on pavement and stay around. So it was good to have Nova Scotia Public Works there and they were asking questions, you know, trying to look for solutions. And one of the things that, the only thing that really affected the town came up was, um, once the Blue Root, which will come in Highway three oh three through Conway, um, and eventually continue out Shore Road, uh, to the, to the, uh, very terminal it seems, is what happens in between. Uh, in the town, the town would have its decision making on, uh, where they want Blue Root to go from there. And it's really, that's all I know at this point. There'll be more information coming forward from them, I'm sure. None of this is written in stone. An information gathering meeting that the, they called me in because they heard that I was, uh, had taken part in our act of transportation plan.
So what was it the town where I was on? Did you let the mayor?
What's that?
Did you let the mayor?
No, there was, it was just some staff. There was me and Debbie Haight and Candace Lemon's, uh, the trail. Um, so it.
Yeah, municipal representative, you were talking about what was gonna happen within the town. Happen, we weren't there.
Well, I, I was there. There wasn't any politicians.
You, you're not an official.
There wasn't any politicians on, on the other side of it. The, they were just looking for information.
But did they, so, so they must take it back to the county. Trails coordinator would report it back to the county, right? That's their, their basic.
Right, okay. If the trails, so Candace Lemon's.
Yeah.
Yeah, would have let the municipality know, okay, yep, you know, chatted with them and here's what, what happened and.
No, that's their basic. I'm just wondering why you were on, all the knowledge of council.
But Candace, is she a, is Candace, she's not a council member, is she? What's that?
Trails coordinator, municipal representative.
Right, so there's no municipal, no council representative from the municipality.
No, but there was some municipal representative who brought back to them, the trails coordinator.
Yeah, and, and that's why they wanted me, they wanted somebody at the town, uh, to, hey, we need somebody at the town, a staff member at the town as well. So they asked me, because I was the one that had done the trails, the act of transportation plan, uh, back when that was a thing. We don't have a trails coordinator. I mean, I'd love to have thrown it to the trails coordinator. I'm, I'm not sure I'm a follow him.
Well, I'm just wondering why we're just finding out about it after, that's why.
I guess it was just a phone call out of the blue and more information to come. It was just like an information session.
Okay, well, I guess, did you know that?
No, not until I threw it in my report. It was one of those.
Yeah, I didn't know, I thought I was in there before, or I wasn't contacted by anybody about the, the, the.
It was like a cold call that I received that, I don't know, should I?
Well, you gotta like, go call like ten minutes before the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, just a cold call. Yeah. It's like a, hey, do you want to be in on? Or an email, maybe that was an email saying, hey, yeah, you want to take part in it. So I'd have to look back and see what. But certainly surprised me, this was no.
Kind of disorganized.
Okay, so the rental units, D A Ts has paid since then, so they're up, they're all up to date. I'm not sure what's happening with the D A T at least at one ten one at Euro. Just have to wait and see.
But do they plan to go back, do you know?
For, uh, they, they didn't discuss it at the A G M. Um, they did talk about using the building. Uh, but there was, there was a question that was circulated by one of the members about whether or not they should, they should have the building if they're not using it. Or if they're not using it to its full potential. Uh, but I, I made the A G M, but I didn't make the previous meeting, so I'm not entirely sure if they're intending to do that or not. And then, did you say D A Ts has paid, uh, now? Uh, because I was gonna even update with D A Ts that they're, um, the treasurer is in hospital, so they were, they were trying to get back the checks and everything, so.
Yeah, yeah, tried to contact them just to let them know, yeah, because they paid at the old H S T rate instead of the new H S T rate.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, uh, but Lenore is in hospital, so I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I received a voicemail back about that after I've been contacted.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, um, is that, Tom, do you know, uh, the farmer's pocket going back there this year? Is that the president of the day? So just that.
I had a phone call from a while ago, about a month ago, from the chair of D A T and asking whether it would be good to use at least the building again. I said, well, you can tell us what you want, basically. And, uh, so, and she said, thought she said she'd refer it to for a meeting and get back. But, uh, anyway, I assume that, but again, they, they don't, uh, they don't utilize that building to the potential that it could be utilized.
The farmer's pocket, they just use it best, right?
The farmer's pocket, all they want is that, not for the general public, but for the vendors, right? Right? The vendors, because of, uh, I guess for, um, I think that's specific for vendors, you know, the ones that are, you know, they don't like necessarily using, you know, washing. They're clean, but not.
I just wondered if.
There's some things in the health regulations, if you're a food vendor, you have to have access to another sink or something, but municipal drainage.
Yeah.
That brings it out.
Something about that, yeah. I'm just wondering if there's something else we should do with that building. It's empty half a year. That's a prime location for a place of the shop or something, or I don't know what, Warfront Valley's using this year, but they.
I think they're, they're, again, had it confirmed, but I believe that in their, their plans to use the station again. Last year, it seemed to, to work well for them actually, you know, and, uh, so.
I guess, yeah, so I guess to answer Matthew's question, maybe we should put that up for lease or tell D A T that, you know, if you're, we should have rental year round with that, really, somehow, some way.
They told Tom the request for, uh, proposals.
Yes.
R F P is right now. So do I just say, you know, I need an answer from D A T, yes or no, or perhaps we're going with R F P?
Yeah.
I was looking at.
Yeah, that's, you sense a subject? That's what it really explains. I mean, it's a sin not to have something in there, that building open, right? It is right there, right?
It's fine.
It is a nice little spot.
Chances would be slim of having somebody there year round anyway, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, at least you'd have some kind of commitment from somebody for, yeah, so you'd have a commitment.
Even when they were there, they weren't there.
No.
Like it was closed.
That, that's, that, that's the thing.
Do we pay for the internet there too? Is that our bill? Do we pay for the internet in that building?
But that's completely, right.
No, no, but we, they've been there for six months. We set up a term with it, right?
I think it may be suspended.
By the way, suspended this year, I'll have to check that normally.
You do the same thing you do with the office, you can suspend the app.
Yeah, it depends on whether there's going to be somebody there or not.
We had it during the, uh, thing that we did that and it was hard. We had internet then.
So, uh, the other thing about internet and that, that section is having a sub, a hot spot.
Yes.
Right, so that, uh, the public here, the van scene and that, we don't get internet for use.
I mean, usually can't find a tenant, it might be a good thing to offer to the library or the museum for some kind of exhibit for the summer.
It's, it's, I think if you put proposals up for that, you can review. Because we didn't, we really didn't before. It was just an ass out there, but they never used it like at all, like stored some flyers in there or whatever and.
With the big anniversary for Maude Lewis, be an ideal time to have a display in there.
Yeah, well, she had told me that they scrapped that program for the summer.
Well, they drafted for the early part. They might try to do something later in the year. Yeah, but they're still working to try to get permission from the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia to use a lot of the paintings and like the system.
She's doing the, the view on thirty five. She said they'd still commit to that, but I think that's, yeah. Anyway, just thought for, food for thought.
If you didn't mind, go really nice office down there.
Yeah, that smells.
Place for a mayor.
Maybe all of them now.
Great, is there a lock?
You've got a lock on the door, you're okay.
All right, anyway, just food for thought for that building. Sure, man.
So Mount Street, just waiting for a final invoice from the project manager to wrap that, to wrap that project up. And, uh, I went over previously how we, we came in under the budget that was previously set, but of course it was much higher than the original estimates. In fact, you'll see it in the capital budget report. Broken of the water in town, so the accurate numbers are reflected in there now. Uh, so let's see, uh, or sorry, in the capital budget statement that's up, up next here. Um, so the statement of operations, um, it still looks like we're going to be very close to on budget. Uh, there's some additional, this shows a hundred and three thousand dollar surplus. Uh, there's still some adjustments to go. Um, and on that big of a budget, it's pretty much break even. Um, so of course we were, uh, thirty eight thousand dollars over budget, so spent basically double the budget. Um, and, uh, on the other side of things, the other larger one was, um, the deed transfer tax. So deed transfer tax, we had a positive variance of, uh, almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, but overall, it looks like we're going to be in close to on budget. And the capital information is there and again, just for information, uh, still a few numbers to, to post, but pretty much that's the end of the year. And that's it.
Any questions for the director of finance?
Why group on that?
So we, we ended up a little hundred thousand dollars, did they talk to the positive? There's, well, there's, right now, there's still some adjustments to be posted in there, so, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm guessing we're gonna have a small surplus, but there's still significant adjustments. And there's, uh, things like, uh, Nova Scotia power invoices that can still commit. We still have, we're still posting. So we don't know, I hate to say that we have a surplus for sure and then come in with a ten thousand dollar deficit.
Okay, so a, a good chunk of that may, may potentially be, um, under the consulting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to just wait and see what comes in for those extra invoices in the next few weeks and the, the last posting adjustments.
That was a little taxes.
I'm breaking you down a little bit. I was kind of thinking we were gonna end up in a hole a little.
Yeah, yeah, we made a positive, it's good.
Be breaking.
Still gonna be a great old.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to dangerous and unsightly premises. Everyone's favorite topic, that's why we wait till the end.
So twenty seven West Street, complaint has been determined to be civil nature, uh, both parties seeking direction from their legal arbitrage. At this time, by law, the rules themselves remain for the ball in the case, ownership of the property will be determined by the property owners. Ten Charlton Street, on April fourth, the owner of the property has issued summary defense data for two hundred and twenty seven dollars to defend from the state law case team, section three forty eight. Repealed by criminal order to remedy the nature of safe condition. Owner has thirty days to pay the fine and have for stolen. Owner will probable to use the same fine as applied to the patient. Eighty nine Sydney Street, on March twenty eighth, property has received an order of remedy condition, the air is backed up. Owner will be given until May the ninth to address the items on the order. And then just to kind of briefly touch base on the fifty three rack road, if you had a chance to read that. Since this report was done, I've received the work and contractor, the piece of the site, and since it's been set off to, uh, to hell of acts for verification. So when those results come in, I'll be getting them held and also, uh, a list of dues and doubts for lack of a better term, of a kind of demolition procedure. So that is dangerous unsightly.
For ten, ten Carroll or Visa, five hundred thirty days, is that how it works?
Under the bylaw, there could technically be defined every day that the violation had not been resolved. But I look at it realistically, take it into court for a fine every day, and there hasn't been a fine, so all of a sudden there's a fine every day. I'd like to give to you, you know, thirty days to at least pay this fine in court. And if that's not the case, then we start increasing the fines when they come. Or again, as mentioned before, seek a drop dead date to the judge where they issued a dead line. And then if they fail to follow anybody's direction, it's a judge, so. That would be my, my photo method, but I'd at least like to give the owner until, um, their, their date is due in May. And if they fail to address them, then we receive, or that was the previous plan anyway. At this time, you, they at least, at least receive the fine of two hundred and thirty seven dollars under municipal government for failing to comply with the order of remedy, dangerous unsightly condition. It has been delivered to the courthouse, so. It has been delivered to the courthouse, so.
Excuse me, we're really, they, they asked best us on the, on the other house on, uh, the racket. I see that you have, site demolition is to stand down.
It was at the time, this was, I can't, I'm, I have not ordered anybody to do this demolition, this was a volunteer thing from the property owner.
Okay, was it? Okay, that was my question.
I, I, I'm not responsible for making this happen and I, I want to make sure that if there is any kind of environmental risks or hazards, that we take our time and make sure that things are done properly before we just rush in and make people forcibly get taken down.
My question was actually, was this a demolition that had been ordered?
No, I suggest if a person addressed the condition of the property, that's up to them to decide what that looks like, whether they want to repair it, whether they want to tear it down, that's their decision. I just am in current condition, it can't stay like that forever, so I have to advise them that they have to address it and whatever we can do for them. I mean, I can't, I can't discern to you what was repaired and what's not, that's up to the owner and up to their finances, so I just knew that it had to be addressed. And they volunteered to tear it down, as they stated to me, it was what they was intended to do, they were just waiting on money. Of course, it's one thing I get quite frequently. So because of the concern that came up about the, uh, the risk of this business, I'm not very professional in terms of what it looks like or what it doesn't. I don't, I don't have them, them skills or credentials, but I do know whoever's responsible for doing the work would be liable to make sure that's done properly as a code. So the contractor reported to me that they had sent some pieces off for sampling and now we just, you know, until that comes back.
Okay, are they on a deadline to repair or demolish the building now?
I, I had not put them on it, and there was a deadline to get something moving, like, um, if I ask somebody at the deadline to address a building, I need something happening. Whether or not they're bringing it to me, like, now they've got a schedule, something they want to follow, or maybe it's the official period on date. I need something to work this, that way I know there's forward movement. It's hard to expect somebody to have the means of just up and tear a ten thousand dollar building down, but I like to think some motion and movement is a.
A test, an act, test of asbestos movement.
It's a good sign of compliance and making sure that at least, um, the environmental aspect is being considered before it's just simply gone in and torn down.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate that you benefited a slight delay, that we're covering the right basis and doing it safely.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, uh, I just really want to, I should say, uh, I really enjoy, I hate fines, I really do hate fines, I hate giving people fines. But when it, you know, when it needs to be done, it's nice to see that it's being done and then you're actually still giving them a little bit of leeway. So hopefully they get the point. My opinion, I would like to see that more often, just because, you know, I know what you're going with, reading your stuff. It's just, it's getting to the point where this is ridiculous, waiting and waiting and telling you to get off the property and all this stuff. So it's good to see you do that, I just would like to stick that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hope you're gonna answer a question I have.
My question would be, are the, uh, tax sales, taxes, have they been paid at all?
On the number ten Carrollton Street?
Yes.
Then I knew somebody was going to ask that, and then we went, I wasn't able to find it, but they had them, but there's only a certain, very small percentage. Actually, it, what's left sits in current position because there's no, the new tax bills haven't been issued yet.
So the tech may be up to date?
Their tech, we have up to date, but we're not, uh, you know, he was instructed that he needed to, uh, if he didn't take them off to zero, that we would proceed with the, the tax sale, yeah, right, so.
So we're, we're still in that position?
Yeah.
How, what is the deadline to do that?
Uh, it's going to be very short because if he hasn't, uh, if he hasn't paid the taxes off and basically, he's already got the notices. Joy already is, the tax work has already started the procedure over again, so the notices that he had, saying we didn't have to go right back to the start. But we need to go back so far, so we have to give them nervous that we're going to put it up for back sale and it's. So that part has been done, so the process is on its way for this. The other thing that, in just discussing, uh, council put right up a demolition and an order to demolish it, just wanted to make, uh, sure that the committee and council unders- understands that is dangerous, you know, on site, we, administrator, or we, or me, a C A O, cannot not order a demolition order. Has to come back to council. The council has to, so she can make a, she can make a recommendation that this needs to be demolished based on all of her, like, back here. Council makes that decision, right, right? So if, if there was an, an order, council will be totally aware, if there was an order, because he can appeal council's order to the council. And we're going to have to public here, so he can come back, he can come in and say, uh, within a certain period, kind of appeal, I guess is an appeal. Right, he can appeal council's decision.
Yeah.
And then, uh, sometimes it's, I say sometimes it's not. We had, uh, we had an incident on Victoria Street where we, uh, the administrator ordered the owner to cut the grass in front of the, in front of the house. And instead of cutting the grass, he tore the hedge down. So.
Severe?
Yeah. Seems a lot. So first thing.
You know, by your week.
Yeah.
So that, if, if that tenant Carlton owner appealed it, would that go to the N S A R P? To appeal, or does that come to where? Has the appeal?
Council.
Comes to council for appeal? And we don't accept the appeal, then we move forward?
Basically, basically, he's appealing, he made, you know, uh, we haven't had that much experience in demolition orders, but I know, uh, when the old Ryan Duke, I mean, the council issued orders and they come back and said, no, and they had experts, like, structural engineers that come back and said, no, this building's structurally signed, it's coming off on them. And the council even went through the process and still stayed there until, you know, it's torn down now, but they voluntarily tore it down. Right, it wasn't because we ordered it.
The old school of us, we did that one too, right?
The old school, we've done that ourselves.
Yeah.
And, uh, no, that was an order to demolish, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, the, uh, the owner tried to appeal, but he missed the deadline, so we tore it down. And he, once the time period passes, what in the order, then we, we have to tear it down, right? We apply the cost to the tax account for the property as a lien, and so.
And you arranged, you arranged, uh, there's a lawyer group in Halifax that, uh, renovates all the buildings and stuff. And they came, and they were going to do it, and he didn't know he had to turn the property over to him, he thought they were just going to do it for him. So then he said, no, we had a.
Yeah, he could, uh, he could walk away and we probably would have, uh, with that particular property, we probably would have still had a building there. As their, their in, uh, their process was, is that, you know, they were taking on ownership and responsibility and they would mothball it until they got funds enough to fix it. At least it would be, would have been secure, they would have to fix the roof, keep it from further damage, board it up, you know, board it up windows and stuff and they mothballed it until such a time that, uh, I think that, because it was, was it some trust, it was a trust.
Some trust, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh.
Too bad.
And, uh, ba- basically, uh, yeah, they got a call and they, basically in tears saying, you know, this guy just won't cooperate. And said, oh, my owner just didn't want to cooperate. He was good, like the mayor said, he was good until such a time that, uh, uh, realized that he would have to.
Lose control.
Yeah, lose control and ownership. Transfer ownership to, to them, he kind of thought, oh, that's enough, fix the building, not fall in on that amazing building.
It did work.
He should have read the fine print.
Yeah, yeah.
Detective Services.
Okay, so this report's a little longer, so I'll just touch base on a couple of points, but I'll make, if I miss some, just ask questions. Um, CCPV report, security system has been upgraded to send push notifications to my cell phone, security technician. Once a camera goes down or loses connection in town, the app has been handling itself more. And testing was complete, it's March twenty first, twenty five, it's issued to report. Parking control since complaint, the, uh, paid handicap spot by the Scotiabank has been removed. All people, the sits in there, does not have been removed, payment eliminated, confusion for an extraordinary cap spot.
Still parking there.
From hand here, you know, I see a lot of people still parking around that spot, everybody, yeah.
Is this Scotiabank or R B C?
No.
R B C.
It's the one right on the corner here, right? And the reason that we moved it back, because we put the pump out there, people, tired of people getting in and out.
Right.
In plus, so we moved it back to the car is parking lot there.
Right.
And then they can get in the car and go, and they have to curb, get them up off, right?
Civic addresses, discrepancy in the civic number on St. George Street, may require the naming of a new road, issue of N A C A P. COVID ethics is followed in the civic number system, special needs C A O required. Um, vending license, we have one request for a vending application, one for a smart card application request. Solid waste management, one seventy six Clean Street, association report, site has been cleaned of all debris and around the site. Complaint emailed me and thanked me for having it taken care of.
Um, certainly, what, what piece of road would have to be renamed?
Um, it's off of St. George Street, there's like an access point, like it's a driveway, for lack of.
Is that one?
That, that piece there, I'm just, so ba- basically, I've got a note here, they're called surveyor. Uh, Charlie wants to subdivide that, wants to subdivide for two lots that are down on St. George Street. Wants to subdivide, so we have two lots there, but he can't, he can't, can't because that road is wired, that's to give them fifty, right? So he wants to give the, the town road, right, so that it can become public, you know, town, street and, uh, that and sort of get it. And we can, uh, they don't have to go through the normal subdivision regulations if we're subdividing for a municipal purpose. So if we subdivide that off, like that is a road partial, right? And then, once we get that, we can name that road. So if those houses on that road that was up there, including John Green Capes, right? And, uh, that would be renamed off of the street, renumbered and renamed off the street because it's not consistent. You know, St. George Street and then they're numbered off St. George Street up in there, right? It doesn't, uh, it's not consistent.
And we talked about it before, but, uh, council, if we, council, we weren't here, but would be enough room for a cloud to turn around?
Yeah, but we have, I'm at the top of the group, there'll be enough to, we won't put a actual call site here, but it'll be turned around. Something similar to what we, we put on, uh, uh, stand in their lane. When we go up in there and then we hit places that instead, before, like, everybody from oil trucks or delivery trucks, they'd back in, other people's driveway to turn around. Well, we put a place now, do that, our cloud can just turn back in, turn around, go back there first, right? So there'll be the same, same idea there, it's the same basic idea that, like, a hair thrown, for instance. And the difference there is, uh, we haven't got the turnaround, we use the driveway of the last owner, the owner's permission, right? And if you cause damage with the trucks, then we just fix it, fix it up, so it's a, it's a gentleman's type of agreement, but, uh, you know, it works for now. We have got room to put a, an actual turnaround space in there.
Is this down by the cemetery or is it the end?
Number down.
It's up, up on the hill.
That would Cory Airs was.
Not sure where Cory lives.
Sort of behind New Isles, this whole place. Not ringing bells?
No, I'm just, I, I'm looking at St. George Street, it, it's a dead end down by the cemetery.
Yeah, where you come back, you, you come back this way.
Yeah, and there's a, a road up on the hill?
I know.
West Street, where West Street came down.
Yeah.
And you go, is this a, not, not too far from West Street?
Just turn right.
And that goes up in there, may not be, when you get there.
Well, this, this shows it as a loop, that's kind of what you were talking about.
That's the end of the other street.
That shows it as a loop up there, is there a different one in here that's not showing here? This is Google Maps, so if anyone can get them up.
Yeah, well, I think that, yeah.
Maybe that's not accurate?
Yeah, it's not accurate.
Okay.
But that, that is a road to talk, but I think going up here.
With the turnaround.
Top and come back down.
So once the town takes it over, is the streets, is, is this already shimmering there?
Yeah, we've already got services in there, right?
Yeah.
So, and we don't have any legal right to be there.
Okay, gotcha.
Right?
That makes sense.
These are the, the things that need to be legally cleaned up if we clean what, the floor, you know? Yeah, it's, uh, so, yeah.
Okay, so back to that, just another one to throw in there, received a complaint concerning rooster disturbing the peace in town. It was said to, uh, be at a property that was, uh, um, it was supposed to be at one property, but determined it was at a neighboring host. And after investigation, we spoke to the owner, and they did in fact have a bird that was there, that was supposed to be there. And since they continue, they have since, um, called birds, they made, is no longer a resident in town. So the peace will be disturbed in the end of town by the, uh, the rooster rooster.
That's the deal.
That kind of little dunted town.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Uh, it's, it's always a horrible thing to have to tell people that they have to get rid of their pets, um, but unfortunately, it's, it's a requirement in town that you have to have one. So they were reasonable to deal with, uh, just to move in.
I put my wild one for roosters.
Yeah, it, it, it really surprises me, you know, the, the word regarding wildlife and, and just birds, you know, wildlife and birds. Two people go in here of this town, so.
So is this loud? Was loud and the neighbors said something?
It was, it was disturbing the peace at nearby site, so it was, it was advised, I mean, they grow for salmon worm in the carcass, which we all know. And, uh, there's, there's not a lot that is more irritating sometimes when you hear that, you can't stop it. So I mean, by law states you can have hands in town, the permission of, you know, permit supplied by the town and also permission granted by your neighbors. So should you decide to want to have chickens, you got to go and talk to your neighbors and get them to fill out the documents, and if they're okay with it too, and they have to be contained, and you can only have four, and no boys left. So unfortunately, they had to get rid of the rooster, whether they gave it away to a neighboring firm, called it, whatever their case may be, that choice was not, it's not up to me as long as it didn't end up in the tampering event, that was their stipulation.
It's your supper.
That's their choice, as long as it can't just end up in a neighboring event in town, so. Do my knowledge, take a, update it here, the bylaw. So again, just give it there, like a couple of points, if there's anything missed that I didn't discuss by omies, please ask.
Any questions? Okay, we'll just, been requested for a little short break, so we'll take a break before we get to rent coordinator. Just a couple of minutes, if you want to get. Just a couple of minutes, if you want to go back to it. And uh, we'll say the very best for last.
Come on, Mr. Eric.
All right, uh, pretty straightforward, as my reports usually are, that way councillor McCormick doesn't fall asleep.
Nice.
PCAP, it's gonna go in once Tom and I speak about it near, uh, probably the end of the week or the beginning of next week, it's pretty busy this week. Um, we did receive approval for a co-op education incentive grant through, through the province, which allows us to um employ a business administration student for sixteen weeks. We did get that approval. I will speak in camera about the events that happened uh later on in regards to personnel, um, so that'll be in camera, I'll let you know. Uh, did the final report for the Thomas Road Infrastructure Engineering Report. Uh, I also submitted the Housing Accelerator Fund, our first term report. So everybody is aware, CMHC, CMHC, who was, who gave us the HAF grant. They contacted me to say as soon as the um, the federal election was called, they turn into caretaker loan. Where they don't want to be doing any work that may perceive, be perceived as advantageous to one party or another. So I put the report in, I was supposed to have meetings with them, that's been stopped until May, when the federal elections go. There's nothing, there was nothing going on, it was just a report, but I do want to get that feedback back from them, that the report was what they were looking for. Did a large amount of work with Leslie in regards to the website for the uh community engagement. I didn't know what I was doing, but I think it came out pretty good, the website had a nice flipbook that we were able to install, so I think that was good, but that took a lot of work, because I'm learning the webs, how the website works whilst trying to do the work. And we don't all have a great um backend for the website, so it can be difficult. Um, as you may know or see when you came in, our new event tent is here, I know that councillor Weir had asked about it being here. Um, we are not going to put it up tomorrow night, because I don't want to set off the sprinkler. Um, but we can use it in the summer for this expo that you folks have all now said we're gonna have a table at, so we can use that perfectly. Uh, I'm going to use one of Ed's guys, we're gonna go down to the digby station one day and just put it up, to make sure it's all kosher and everything looks okay. Um, I've been given approval by the CAO, we're gonna buy a really large uh roller bag, put all the parts in, and I'm gonna create a checklist, so that parts that come out, let's go back in, because that's the big thing with those tents, is the parts just get lost, really, really easy.
So why don't we do it? The fire department too, is we zip tie it, so once it's canceled, you zip tie it initially. Also, you know, we put all the parts in, initial it, so you cut it open, is a part missing, then you can say, Rob, you initialed this, you're set.
Exactly how I wanted to do it, so, and I'll get a strapping system for the, for the pole, so everything, it'll be in two sections, it'll be the poles and the bag. We don't know where we're gonna put it yet, but it is here. Also, uh, I ended up, uh, Leslie and I put together a story for a gigantic van card, which was March twenty sixth, I think I sent everybody a text copy of that, actually, council meeting. And again, administrative specialist work that we did, and I'll again speak to that in, in camera. And I did the evacuation training with uh, with everybody for the digby ring.
Any questions for the grant coordinator? Why don't you talk faster?
Hearing none, I guess I'll entertain the motion to accept all the votes.
So moved.
Second or?
Second.
All of us?
Councillor Foot, because it's easier to take than you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, none? The ayes have. A little correspondence from Minister, Mattman and Minister Law.
Yes, so there's a prior review coming on, and I guess once again, the committee, I'm just waiting for that report. And it's gonna go through it, so once you get that report, then I will send the details from that committee if you like. But if there's any comment that you want to cry out, let me know.
Do we know when that might be? Do we know when that might be, sooner or later?
Soon. There's actually two reports going on, I forget the acronym, the other one, there's two reports going on right now.
Uh, next order of business in new business, communication strategy. So, this is something that I put together uh and sent to the executive, it's one part of two. Policy will come from this, this is basically the why for communications, and the introduction starts out explanatory, it sort of talks about what we in the business would call sunset media. The demise of mainstream media in small towns, basically can see almost everywhere in the countryside. Uh, and this puts us in particular, people, we're trying to communicate with folks about anything we try and do. So therefore, from that, we have some goals, basically to increase public awareness and enhance emergency communications, strengthen engagement, and promote transparency and trust, which are basically four pillars of everything we strive to strive for in community communication. Our target, target audience is our residents, business owners, community organizations, and visitors, because we do them, the big tourist population in the summer, which, I mean, uh, it, it could very easily be a child of tourists who goes missing, that we will have to communicate, right? So you have to be prepared to sort of encompass everything. Key messages, resident safety is always well-being and, and our top priorities, the town of Digby is committed to open transparent communication. Your feedback matters, you help us build a stronger community, and you have to stay informed, stay safe, and stay connected. Uh, the channels, basically, are broke down, um, and I didn't put in there uh our monitors, if we, if we go to the monitors, but it sort of self implies, and you could probably add a line in there to, to encompass, I think we talked about that a little bit, Leslie, to sort of encompass, because social media is going to change. You know, what we might do in five years may change too, it should be all encompassing, so you don't have to go back and revisit this, um, but I sort of added um, I sort of added a few things too, that we always have the ability to use flyers, posters, and post things in our own library, right? It's our library, we should be posting things, everything's happening, um, just as a course of, of what we should be doing. The tactics and the implementation, considerations for ramifications, I sort of spelled it what I thought were sort of the guidelines to do that with. Key performance indicators and all things too should be taken into effect, you should always look back at what you've done, what was effective, and what you could do better. Should always be sort of involving, and that's sort of, as I was putting this together, that's sort of how I approached it, and tried to encompass all those things in it. Uh, do you have any, have any questions about anything to say, or anything that I missed? Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Yeah, maybe we'll go back to what Tom said, uh, a third party kind of communication expert or influencer, whatever you want to call them nowadays. Man, they did wonders for my friends thing, like it was insane what they did for the price.
I thought we, because NSFN has a, a little seminar
Yes.
on it, and I thought we should probably all go and listen to what they say.
That's a great idea.
Because we could probably implement some of their strategies.
Sure.
Yeah.
I like that.
Is that next week?
What is it?
The Toro, I mean?
Yeah.
No, that's, that is next week, right?
Yeah, all right. Anybody else?
No, you did a great job too.
Sorry, because I, this is committing a long. Um, we think it's, it really reboots everybody, and it's super important, and I know you did know it in here, that it needs to be resourced correctly. Your alerted lot, that's been purchased, Leslie and I have already spent enormous and it's not even lying. Yeah, so that, I, I really, really would hope you could look at the resourcing this kind of strategy, I love it, I think it's great. This can't be done off the side of somebody, no, it's okay. So, that's kind of my two cents, because
Is there, speaking for myself, uh, if, if there are any tasks that I could do for you, please just
Totally appreciate it.
Shuffle over.
It's one of those things where it's like, I'm just trying to get it stood up.
Yes, yeah.
And trained.
We talked about an act up committee too, some kind of committee for this as well, right?
Well, there's no reason we can't split the workload.
Right.
There's a lot of menial tasks that don't need to be a high level.
Not yet.
No, yeah, they have, when we get to a point, there will be.
But if it all comes back to a central spot, like whoever's really in the end pushed the button, the kind of thing, you're, you're revising it and whatnot, right?
I just, I, I just want, I, you I think it's important to keep that at the forefront of this, so.
Yep.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
And don't forget, it all has to follow through Tom, it's gotta go through the CIA.
He's gonna love that.
That's
You're gonna move CIA, I will
Oh my gosh.
So a quick question.
Yeah.
So, no, what do we do with this now?
This becomes the basis of where your policy comes from, which is already written.
Okay.
And which is the next step, and we'll see in the next second.
Yeah, so it's ba- basically ba- basically, it, it's, it's a lot like our land use stuff, right? So, this is our MPS, it's like our strategy, right? And the policy will be like our land use bylaw, so the policy will be based on what's in the strategy. And you can't put something in policy that's not in the strategy, right? So that's basically, if you want to add something that's not, then you get them in the strategy, right? So.
So
Did we discuss actually changing the name of it to
Yeah, we discussed a few things, but I didn't make those amendments here, because I didn't find them till after polls, but I did find them, so yes. There are a couple minor little grammar changes that we will, we will implement, if you guys make this recommendation to council, then we can, uh, we can make those change, I, I did find all the changes, yeah.
Because I was gonna say, I didn't, I thought you had found one, unless I would have upset my mind, Jay.
I did, I found one.
Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have discussion, it's kind of wrapped up, can I put a motion in?
Sure.
We got the councils?
Yep.
We'll send that.
Thank you. All those in favor, send it to the council. Councillor Weir?
So, for tomorrow night, are we doing anything with the alert system?
Yes.
Yes.
So It's just basically, ever, because it's not live.
Yeah.
And then just, uh, we get posters, we get the video, right? That's my understanding, and uh
People
Then, then basically, if people want, just sign up, I guess
They can provide their name
Name.
And their phone number, it, it, Rob's a little iffy on that, but we'll, we'll work out the details for
So, for tomorrow night, because we have nothing to stand up, we have nothing to sign on to, if they want to sign up as a landline, I think that's a great opportunity to write it down. But it's so much better if a person simply goes and downloads the app themselves than for us to put them on, it's so much easier, like they can actually download the app and not sign up to anything.
But if they want, but
The landline, yes.
The landline, they're not gonna have the app, right?
Right.
Right.
So, we can say, if you want, if you don't want to use the app, when that comes, give the sure information through there.
Well, it's tomorrow, so let's make sure, we gotta
Initially, we have a
Okay, great, awesome. So, the one in June?
What's tomorrow?
Or tomorrow, next week? What's tomorrow?
It's for inspection, but it comes
Oh, gee, when is it? Tomorrow, oh, what is tomorrow, I don't even know if they
Tomorrow's Friday.
No, shut your mouth.
Shame is Monday, we always know Monday, tomorrow's Tuesday. So in June, when we do the other one? When's that other train show?
I think June eighth, wasn't it, seventh?
Should be, yeah, seventh, great.
I think we could be up and running.
It is tomorrow, by June first.
All right.
Not listening to the CAO tomorrow.
Seventh day is correct. So, instead of dragging staff in on the weekend for that show, are these two guys capable of doing that?
Does that mean it's an issue?
I'm
No, I'm just saying, whatever.
Let's just
Did you get locked on to NSN?
Wait to see where we're at.
Let's just wait and see where we're at.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. It'd be nice if we were all sort of trained on it, on what's on the day.
We're gonna have to be, I guess, though.
I mean, if it's up and running, you'll have it on your phone.
Yeah, your phone's going on, so
Me?
You're gonna
Because we'll put it on there for you.
Okay.
The company phone is mandatory.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Don't have to, you're just gonna be on it, right?
Just gonna turn on.
Cool.
Okay, Mount Street School.
Nice.
So
So I sort of brought that up, because at the planning meeting, someone brought up this situation, and I know we, we got a quote doing the upstairs there for apartments and stuff, it's like millions of dollars, so maybe we should use that space for, I know we, we talked about it at the executive meeting, maybe office spaces or something, and start renting a place out and get some money coming in, into there, right?
I mean, I talked to Leslie about, uh, we have to consider the rent being uh accessible on the second floor.
Right.
And that means possibility of an elevator? Well, we could move dark to those offices and save spending money on
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we brought that up too, didn't we?
Yeah.
Were we downtown at the?
Yeah, we can interject on that.
We're not big, that's not big. I would, Mount Street would be big, that would be as much
They'd have extra room.
They, they, yeah.
Extra rooms, yeah. I, I believe that's on the, um, the elevators on the agenda for uh the meeting on Thursday.
Joint Council?
Yeah, the joint council meeting, so uh, great opportunity to bring it up.
Absolutely, bring it up, yeah.
Because that building would be perfect for them, they wouldn't have to worry about, uh
Yeah.
I don't think they have to be in the buildings, I wouldn't think so, I mean, they do a lot of their
Just the, the rent staff has to be, but not the nanny staff, and, you know, you have people trying to climb them steps to register for programs and
Right, yeah.
And, and that
So we, we took a lot through, we'll leave it there last, because they were renovating to painting them, the office, there's three offices. The third one is like a closet.
Yeah.
It's not very big.
No, it's, it's too small.
No, so they've got a huge open room that, you know, it's really loud and, and echoey, so if you had three large offices or
Activities are through the school anyway. But there's no, there's no soundproofing or privacy even in those offices.
Yeah, no.
You have to talk to the manager, and, you know, you shut the door, or whatever, you know, send want to say, anybody outside, and hear every word, it's like going wrong, right?
I used to like the pool tables up there in the house, like back in the day, remember?
What? Play pool up there and watch hockey.
Where is this, Shane?
Up the rink, upstairs.
So yeah, I mean, I don't know how we work out uh any revenue from that, but storage?
Current revenue's pretty low. Current revenue's pretty low.
I mean, they basically, you know, you get that for the expenses, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Like I tell you, there's a lot of birthday parties going on there, ball hockey, hockey hockey, skating, uh, I mean, I hope rollerblading someday, whatever, but I'm just saying, upstairs, they use that like crazy, and we made it a little bit more, it's some cool stuff up there.
Yeah, you need
Yeah, you're, you're talking about eliminating it though, because it's gonna be accessible.
That's
So it's not accessible, like storage.
So we're just thinking we, kids' parties. No, still not accessible, because there's kids that are non-accessible.
Those, those, those stairs are nasty.
But just going back to Mount Street, even if you've got repairs, new windows, you're deciding what are done under dark, I mean, you're investing in our building.
I mean, it's waiting up to anything.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know?
You can't get rid of the building, because you might have it again, but if you say something else, it's a Yeah. All right.
So, just while you're talking about that building, if it doesn't work out with dark or something, um, there's a, a lot of seniors who go to Legion and places like that. Who, the conversation is, they'd like to have someplace where they can leave a project, mid-project and walk away. And a group like that may be interested at some point, if it doesn't go to dark. Of using that large room as sort of like a hobby room, and maybe a seniors group could rent it.
Sort of
Of the big room at
Stairs.
Yeah.
We're getting, you have a seniors group on the second floor, and it's
Well, it's, no, no, I'm talking about
On that street.
On that street. I'm talking about, I'm just saying, if that doesn't go for dark
Yes.
Perhaps, it, it could just be, the idea could be put out there, that, like, I know Waymouth is developing a maker's space room, for seniors, basically. Or for anybody, but it's mostly seniors, who come in, they do little projects, and they don't have to put them away, they can walk away, come back another day, you know, like
Almost like a community, use open space.
Yeah, so if it doesn't work for dark, perhaps something like that could be looked, looked at, because you've got the big room, plus you've got a couple smaller rooms there Plus, you've got a couple smaller rooms there to use for other things, obviously, whatever.
We should probably take a tour of that, because it's been renovated since, you think there's a big room there.
Oh, Salvation Army didn't?
They changed it.
Oh, I didn't know that.
We can tear that wall down.
But even, even so.
In the back, they made the two blocks on the back side, subside into one.
Well, that's what I thought, at the back of the building, Salvation Army does. That room, because, and the other thing that perhaps it could be used for is a meeting space. Where you can rent it out as a meeting space, that room.
That's what we're talking about.
So, it easily.
So, that's so easy, you're switching focus, so right now, upstairs is not even, not used. The downstairs is rented and pays for the usability.
Yeah.
You now open the upstairs certain thing for heat, which now costs you money.
Yeah.
Right?
It would have to be.
Dark for someone else in there paying rent, or at least paying the upkeep, right?
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting it be for free, I'm suggesting that if somebody wanted to use it, they, they could rent it for those purposes, right?
Options anyways, yeah.
Yeah. Just other options, yes.
Darker do their senior days there too.
Lots of it.
There you go.
Yes. Okay, uh, one hundred and thirty fifth banners.
So, I, I guess it's gone. Thought was we should, when we do some banners downtown, maybe get a couple, one thirty five banners for the summer.
So, all the basic banners are ready, there's six of them made, like two at the marina, two center and two down at the. That was walk.
So, who made them?
Ricky.
Ricky, how much would it be now?
Uh, three hundred and sixty five bucks.
Heat?
Or six?
Three. Six.
They were, I, I developed a design, we'll be different.
Right. So, do I need, should I make a motion for that, that we get a couple?
But you already have money for your one hundred and thirty fifth, you can spend.
It's not in there. Unless we get a, unless a grant comes, our grant comes.
Wasn't your budget, Mister Mayor?
I told you to go three.
Yeah, I thought we would do something. Make a motion that we do two banners for downtown with a one thirty five, or put something on front of the building.
You should do more than two though.
Oh, yeah.
You're doing more than two. They're just gonna like, that's it, one hundred and thirty five years, one five.
Do six.
Can you do something that doesn't have a one three five in it and do another one with one thirty five on the side, and then you use that one again? You know what I mean? Kind of. You can see something or something.
We'll be, you do the one thirty five, it's kind of a one-time use.
That's what I mean.
Same with your fifty ones, right?
That's what I mean, you do two one thirty fives and the rest are nice pictures of D B or something.
You could do a, you could do a double side, you could do a one thirty five on the side and then just kind of D B along the other.
And then use it again, yeah.
But the one thirty five will still be there for.
Well, yeah, you have to incorporate.
For the next year.
The one thirty five corporation, yeah, so.
What's your decision?
Well.
So, I'll make a motion for three fifty.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest we make a motion that you get the, the banners approved, but the design to be worked out.
Alright. Yeah, maybe Ricky has an idea that we can.
Yeah.
Kind of take it off, put it on, kind of thing, who knows?
Alright, I'll try to get something out of it in two weeks.
Just leave me, I think I still have to do that.
So, basically, it'll be down on one side and then one thirty five on the other. So, you'll bring a business on next tentative or something?
Uh, cancel.
Sixty one ninety each, three hundred and seventy one dollars and forty cents plus tax. Twenty four by thirty seven, seven society, so that was for six of you.
So, I'll give it up. Great, cancel.
Call it four hundred, sounds good. Call it four hundred, your good is ready. Is that a motion, that's okay? Could you amend your motion to four hundred dollars?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Friendly motion. With that, who's the second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
That's what we need to count.
Right, right, okay.
Good job. Great. Most in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Uh, request for decision for public works administrative assistant.
So. Uh, subject is public works administrative assistant operator. It's a term position. So, the recommendation is that the town D B council approves the term position on the year of a public works administrative operator position at a fifty fifty cost share with the D B water commission. Effective May sixth, twenty twenty five. The position will be assessed on or before April first, twenty twenty six by the C A L. And the recommendation as to whether the position will continue will be brought forward to the town council. So, the background is under the community works program assistant administrative water. Assistant administrative water operator position within the town of D B public works department was cost shared between the D B water commission and the D B, uh, and the community works program. This role provides hands-on experience and valuable insights into water distribution operations alongside essential administrative tasks. It entails, uh, thirty two week full-time commitment with a working order of thirty six hours per week. Turning eleven hundred and fifty two hours at a wage of twenty dollars and seventy two cents per hour. The administrative assistant water operator collaborating closely with the credit for public works, contributing to various administrative responsibilities, including data entry and record keeping, regulatory compliance support, scheduling and coordination. Administrative support, data analysis, project support, compliance monitoring and community outreach. The position has been considered a success of warrants and extended beyond funding of the commu- community works program. Discover the administrative assistant operator. Position can be broadened to include other duties within the public works department as well as within the office of the C A L. The adopted description has been drafted to detail the responsibility of broadening scope of the position. Now, you're adding a requiring the public works administrative assistant operator to seek certification with the department of environment and climate change. Of an operator in training opens the door to having more certified operators for the water utility and the wastewater system, which is a requirement of our crewed operators. The town's fifty percent cost share of this position will split forty percent water to, uh, wastewater and ten percent to town hall administration. The total cost of this position is estimated to be forty one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars annually, based on twenty one dollars and twenty five cents per hour. This was tabled to the, uh, water commission at the last meeting last week, and the water commission has approved their fifty percent.
Make a motion to approve our fifty percent of that, uh, reach.
I'll second that.
So, basically, the forty percent of the wage that, uh, contribute to wastewater is also cost shared with the municipality through our funding form of us, so.
That's what I mean, that's all in there.
Hundred percent, had to.
Do they have to agree to this before it goes ahead? No.
Okay, prior to that, won't anything that, I mean, if, if that was the case, every time we bought something for wastewater, we could prove it first, and that's not long. It's within our budget, and it's our public works to, we can just allocate. And so, if we have wastewater silver rate, and, uh, that in its, it's part of the collection system, especially the, uh. Lift stations and fourth mains, then basically that is cost shared with, it's about, I think, thirty percent of, of that. Like big stuff on it.
Well, well, that's good.
So, and the other, uh, so the remaining liquid share of, uh, of that forty percent, which, uh, is paid for through the silver rate. So, as far as the tax, the actual tax rate, it's, uh, ten percent. Four, four thousand dollars is what they say, the time we have to pay, right? And it's definitely.
The other percent, please.
Yeah, so basically, the idea is to get that person cross-trained, never, never come down. Cross-train her, her job loves, she can, uh, she can help, uh, fill in for, for less week. At, at different times, especially vacation and stuff. And, uh, that's also things that, that Rob was responsible for, but, uh, I've got bigger fish for Rob, Rob to try. And, uh, I mean, allocate the resources to, uh, you know, better suit the salaries and.
Right, well, I'm kind of deserved, that's for you. He's all you guys, so. Come on, sell that one to us, I'm good for it.
Any other questions? Call the, all those in favor?
Alright.
Contrary minded? The A S A, unanimous.
That's the recommendation, Captain.
That's it. Uh, H five, roadside finish.
Uh.
Signage?
Signage.
Signage, oh, I thought, I'm sorry, signage?
Uh, signage, roadside signage, signage. Uh, but I just wanted to bring up that I sent an email out to the C A L, uh, to discuss the sign by K F C. And, uh, I believe, um, it's been, it has now surpassed the six-month timeframe since the new owner has taken, uh, taken ownership of the building. So, uh, at this point, I don't think they're enforced to really do a hold on, aside from handing back over to the, uh, C A L to.
They just have to.
To take.
They just have to. Go and.
Yeah, we'll be the right person to go and either. Okay, go on that.
Okay.
Could we maybe include that, this is just a suggestion, that it be used or repurposed for a sign at dark? Cause on that, dark is just a short little thing, listen, I mean, that would be a great frame for anything that one to add later, and they could take what they have now and certainly.
See, the, the thing is, the A S A sign doesn't belong to us.
No, that, at the top, great, I'm talking about the infrastructure, the poles, you know, that whole.
Was put there by K F C.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not a provision, right? So, we have to tell him as the new owner.
Yes.
We want it removed.
So, I thought the deal was we would offer to remove it if he gave us the materials.
Uh, you can offer that, um.
Oh, I was right, I was under their premise, sorry.
We can, if, if that's, uh, what he wants us to do, we can move it and keep the, the salvage for our own, yes. Then we can repurpose it wherever, right? But the thing is, is, uh, he lacks the territory, maybe down south, and salvage it, I don't know where you can put it, but, uh. Another thing for all days to deal with, probably that, but it would be better, I, I would like that suggestion better, but, uh, you know, it has to be removed and, uh, so. We can, the town will have it removed and, uh, and relinquish the ownership of the. Like, there's, it's sitting on time property, right? If, even if it was on, on, uh, the private property, still it needed to be down because of no business there, right? Well, uh, but there's no sign there, it's just a structure there, right?
We have to have an electrician probably, cause there's still electricity there.
Yeah.
Yeah, stick it at the bottom.
Yeah.
Can, can we motion to get rid of that sign? Bring it to council for it?
We already have.
We have.
Yeah, so we just.
Yeah, it's a six-month.
Process right now, we had.
I thought we did, oh, yeah, we could get rid of that thing.
We, I mean, we started the process when it was first sold.
Right.
The A S A first sold.
Right, I remember.
And then, uh, my interpretation or others being heard around the council table, it was the previous council. And was that, uh, wanted to sort of, we, we can see what's gonna happen with the salvage return and it could be re, repurposed for a business. Well, that's so we sort of backed off. And then, basically, it resold again, still no business going there, and then, and so our process, that whole triangle piece is crucial to that intersection. Those other signs, the provincial signs, you know, there too, in my opinion, right?
Yeah.
And clean, clean that up. And you could put a, a right.
Turn right turning lane.
There, right? A legal right turning lane, and that would cut down on some of the congestion at, at, at the lights.
Is there any reason those provincial signs just couldn't go to the other corner?
See, I don't even know why they're, technically, I thought that, that signs direct your sight away from the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, is it a lucid? Right?
Yeah.
You're walking across another.
Right, and you gotta get that turn lane to read it or go there.
Yes.
So, read it away, you can't, they should come down too.
Good, oh, yeah. And is there any, what's?
Because they're provincial, can we still, can we move that, that's the.
Uh, or you're. Probably have them to, again, like.
Or they can fall down or process.
Yeah, once chain, chainsaw, seven three quarters of the raceway, and then the next one, they're pop over and.
No, see.
How's the return?
You know, they're not really prompt on the signs back up.
No.
K F C sign falls down on it?
And that's where we have.
Okay, that was good.
No, I essentially want to bring it up just for council's attention, so if they knew that you were working on it and, uh, it'll move along here. Uh, hopefully, not too long.
It's kind of a, a counter-related issue, I mean, we've asked for things and voted on, and then the Princess Elena sign is another example. We asked a long time ago that that be put in the D B station, just be, just kept safety, you know?
I don't know, we have to be asking for some of these things.
There are.
Motion, motion?
So, motion. Secondly.
Uh, before we, oh, yeah, I guess, I wanted to bring something up, sorry. Uh, Mr. Chair, I was just thinking that before we do in German and that stuff as well, I was gonna ask you and the council, maybe we could accept the motion to either, like, carry the delegation of the workout rally monies to the director of finance or the council for, for discussion. We never said anything about that, he was here, and he kind of like just left.
Well, we kind of have talked about that in grants already.
Yeah. We did, but not, he came here and did a proposal for us, at least we could do this.
We're gonna get back to him, I guess.
Get back to him with something.
I think he was waiting to see if there was something happening.
Yeah, yeah, I just felt bad, but he was waiting for a decision on.
Have they been notified of our decision on the grants already?
Not yet, no.
Not yet? So.
Five, right?
How much did we get, five?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Eight ten.
Five.
One thousand or fifteen, right?
Yeah.
Just in my opinion, they came here on their own time, didn't thought their paperwork and such.
But all their paperwork, on the January thirtieth, definitely.
It is. Not for the grants, I'm just saying for the, for the presentation.
The presentation falls under the grants.
Right, that's what it is, the grant.
Yeah, we make a motion to take that.
Here we are, laying outside of our room.
I think they asked for fifteen thousand or twenty thousand.
They did, we made it.
They asked for fifteen thousand in grants, and we turned them down to five.
Yeah.
So.
Did they ask for fifteen or the five?
Fifteen.
They asked for.
Fifteen, yeah.
But that was the fifteen, you think?
Yeah.
They asked, they actually asked for twenty.
Oh, so, could we give them a note, letter saying thank you for the presentation, we need a five?
They'll get the notice.
Can you add that in there as well for the presentation?
They get the notice when they get to five thousand.
Yeah.
That this is all we're giving them, right?
Maybe the, maybe what he's asking for is fifteen thousand, what beyond normally, right? That's potentially what he's saying.
I guess, Tom, do you have a figure on what our insert, what our in-kind services are we giving? Public works and stuff, it must be twenty thousand at least.
Oh, morning.
I was like thirty five thousand dollars last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's quite substantial.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
I mean, uh, I have, as far as staff that are on, just for a work rat, just for the weekend.
Yeah.
From Friday until Sunday. From Friday till Sunday. I mean, uh, I have my law that works, you know, depending on how busy it is, you know? Sometimes I say, well, it's, you know, no, no wood or iron, uh, fill up and suddenly it's slow, it's like you're slowing. And you can tell Saturday morning, Saturday morning, they can start to fill up in nine, ten o'clock, right? You know, start to see.
Yeah.
And weather, but, you know, you've got that, you've got, uh, you've got my, my. And, uh, you've got, uh, and then you've got public works, you know?
Put signs up there.
Yeah.
Traffic control. Maybe they don't understand, they just think they're working stinky.
Maybe they understand, they just.
Yeah, he, he emphasized that they appreciate what we do, but maybe he needs to know in the latter of the five thousand that. Here's what we give in kind services, thirty five, now do you want no staff and twenty thousand, or do you want?
You want this much cash and this less.
Yeah, and then you gotta bring in staff.
And then you pay to care of that, whatever, yeah.
I think he just maybe, since he's new, needs to explain on the grants that here's what we give you in kind.
Well, it's his job to ask for money.
Yeah, this is his job, ask for money. Absolutely, that's what he's doing.
Yeah.
And our job to tell them, I believe, why, I think.
Well, we don't necessarily have to justify anything, all we have to do is say, we feel we've done enough.
That's right.
With in kind and our, our grant.
That's right.
Thank you for your presentation.
Exactly.
Presentation is key as well, let's not go back to whenever.
Yeah, but he will, they will, well, Rick will get the letter.
Yeah.
Warfront rally will get the letter.
We're frank, right?
As soon as we get them ready. We talked about it again today, so.
And even the public should know, because when.
Right.
If it gets out that, you know, we only gave five compared to twenty, people can realize, well, we actually give thirty thousand and, you know, everything else.
And some, yeah. Plus, we, we do volunteers.
Taking into consideration, uh, rent, tear on the, on my vehicles, fuel.
Well, that's just.
Clean up.
Police contract that we.
And then, uh, and then.
Yeah.
Policing.
Right, after cleanup.
Uh, there's no extra cost to us, but the thing is, is that is all part of the, is all part of the top contract. We're just, uh, you know, we, we've been very fortunate that, uh, past staffs, I think, have, uh. When we were under, uh, our own contract, direct contract with the R C P. We would have been on the hook for all of that extra policing costs, right? And they, they worked their, their magic and the municipality also worked their, you know, agreed that, you know, it was good for the area, so. They used their, their numbers helped and stuff like that, and then ended up costing us what it would have costed to police and kill us.
I just, I just think in the end that we're all making the town more money, you know? And it's helping everybody, and I just think that they need to know that we're really helping more than they probably even think. Because I didn't know until you just said all that stuff, and I lived here for a long time.
And we give them vending, we don't take anything from the vendor.
Just, uh, just, yeah, just easy level.
Staff and that, that, and.
No, it's secret.
That worth doing, right?
Yeah, so you buy vendors on Saturday.
There you go.
Uh, that's a thousand bucks or seven hundred bucks, that's, that's a ton of money.
I think, on the other hand, is there, that's sorry, is there, when they have their vendors in town. Uh, how, how does that work? Are they totally in control of the vendors, nobody else allowed in town on that weekend?
Yeah.
Within town limits, or just downtown?
Within the desert, maybe.
Supposed to, on top of everything else, they, they get exclusivity for vending?
So, so ba- basically, on private property, another vendor could set up, they have the license to the town.
Yeah.
So, down at the carros, the videos, the vendor that sets up in his part home lot.
Okay.
He gets a license for our snufflemore for that, right? And, but, I don't, you know, he pays Leo, whatever he, Leo charges him for the space, plus he gets a license for us. Right, which must be cheaper than paying a venue license.
And he's right downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, all the churches that make money off pardon because they.
Yeah.
I run their lots in the Admiral Leaven Museum.
That's a good thing. I was just curious, every, we're talking about everything they get and the exclusivity of vendors, it's gotta be worth quite a bit.
That's why there was so much, uh, flap over the vending fees that they charged, at one point jumped and revealed. And everyone blamed the town because they said, oh, you're charging that, no, not us. Here's your vending license, this is great, they go, they charge whatever Warfront rally wants to charge.
They charge.
So.
All of that's on here, the town, the town, the town.
Yeah.
Right, this is an opportunity.
The reality is all festivals, see, three festivals we have cost the town money.
Yes, it does. But it makes the town a lot money.
Not directly, it makes. Residents' owners and the citizens' money.
Yeah, we need them to pay their bills, though.
Yeah. But it's indirect, right, it's the, the hotel and motel owners make money, which in turn means they pay their taxes, which means they can pay the.
They actually buy building materials and.
And on it goes.
Oh, of course, we're spending tax monies for them to make tax monies and stuff, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the big circle, put that in a letter for him for a breakdown or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and there's a big thing too, that we actually lock up downtown, we interrupt businesses, right?
Interrupt other businesses, yes.
Yeah. All right.
Camera?
Here's trouble.
Uh, we did.
Were you in camera yet?
I don't know.
I think you get canceled there.
Camera.
Okay, yeah. And, and I'll vote for it.
Aye.
Thank you. You're voting for it, I.
You have to be official, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure they know.
Nay.
We are now out of camera.
So I make a motion that with, uh, PID number three zero two three one one seven nine. That we propose option number sketch two.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion is carried.
Most were there? I would be, no, he can also do this one.
Yeah.
And, I don't really get the home record, right?
Uh, I'll make a motion for PID number.
Three oh three.
Yeah, that's it.
Three oh five, three four.
Boy, you've got good eyes.
By the evening.
Oh, right there, three oh five.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Eight thousand dollars.
She, she's watching.
I'll, I'll second the.
That's gonna be the down payment of the house. Motion is. Done, seconded, we have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried.
These are his recommendations, right?
Supposed to do a adjourn?